All those we need to order at 6:32 PM. So before we begin, I just want to take a quick moment to recognize the passing of a wonderful teacher in town. And you know, Kristi Gorman was somebody that I never had the opportunity to meet. My kids went to the little school, but I know a lot of people, friends from the hood that talked about how important she was to the community at the hood school, the various students that were there. A lot of sadness in the community over her passing. And I know some of the administrators had mentioned, you know, when she was sick, how devastating it was as well. And so I just want to, you know, take a moment, a moment of silence for Kristi and her family and, you know, send all our best wishes to them as they deal with this tragic loss. So just want to have a moment of silence for Mrs. Gorman. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Dr. Daly?
Just to add on that, Kristi was phenomenal teacher, teacher leader, curriculum leader. She ran our summer programs, Title One programs for many years. Just a huge, huge loss for our community. Dr. McKay, Ms. Conant, Mr. Colleen, Ms. Soris, many others came together to help out and support. So we've had staffing at the hood school to support there. And I think everyone is aware, we are doing an early release this Wednesday just for the hood school only. We feel that we can provide education for the students in the morning, well supported, but having that early release allows for all of the staff to, that want to attend the service can attend. So I feel like that's in alignment with our policy. So, but it's not going to impact the other schools as much, and so we're just going to focus on that.
Yeah. And I saw some things that were out about it. It seems like things were handled very well from the school district. So thank you, Dr. Daly, for that. And yeah.
Yeah, this.
Yeah. Tough, tough news.
Very tough.
Okay. So we're going to open with public input. Obviously tonight is a budget hearing, so if people have comments on the budget, you can keep them and ask any questions or raise any comments during the budget hearing at seven o'clock. But if anybody has anything they'd like to say outside of budgetary issues or things that are on the agenda, please identify yourself and... Okay. I don't see any, so we'll move on. I don't believe we have the student report tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah. Our student reporter has a conflict that I wasn't able to get someone else to come.
Okay.
We can move to one of the other agenda items.
Yeah. So since the budget hearing is scheduled for seven, we won't begin before seven, but we will move on. And do you want to go through the, do you want to go through the MSBA statement of interest to begin, Dr. Daly?
Sure.
Mr. Connolly, whoever's going to lead us in this?
Sure. So I'll just share, you know, we presented to our capital planning improvement that we have a proposed modular replacement project. We currently have module units at the little and the hood school. There's two spaces at the hood, at the little school, four spaces at the hood school. And we are proposing to not have the mods at the little school and to replace the ones at the hood school with a permanent structure. That permanent structure would allow for more than the four that's there now, at least six, maybe more than six, through the designs that we have there, which would allow us to have a more permanent structure for many years for all that's offered now and also some room for some expansion as our programs. The hood school's seen quite an increase in numbers over the last few years, and we feel like this is prudent. So this is about four and a half million dollar building project that we are seeking MSBA to help us to reduce those costs. So this is something that Michael and Sunny Campania have worked on to director facilities to submit. We need a statement from the school committee and from the select boards. The select board's also hearing this tonight. And all that you're giving approval to is, you know, what we've shared here in order to submit for our statement of interest to the MSBA.
Okay. Questions, comments? My first question would just be the timing of everything. So what is the timing of the approval? And if we were to be approved, I mean, what do we, what do we think? Like what year would it be that this would be done?
Yeah.
Move them? And what would we do in the interim between, you know, like tear down and then put back up? Like, how would that work?
Yep. This will impact the timeline. You know, the MSBA approval is, we're going to, you know, substantial savings, but it would also certainly impact the timeline. So we're not sure whether this project, whether there's be an appetite for this. And so at least we're going to, we're going to make our attempt here to get that information. So it's the savings versus it would impact the timeline. We're not currently able to utilize the little spaces this year. We could make some use if we needed to. And the hood spaces are usable. We've been doing a lot of repairs to floors, to walls, to ceilings, to different aspects there to make those spaces, we've already extended beyond their useful life, and we would continue to do so until this was done. Michael, do you have a sense of the overall timeline?
So it would take about two years to move through this, the channels with the MSBA. So it's, we would have to get in their pipeline of approval, be heard in front of their board for approval, which would be kind of moving into the summer, fall, fall months. And then once, if we were to be a project that gets funded and approved, ultimately approved by their board, then we would then start the procurement process, which takes time, owner's project manager to oversee the project, design, you know, designer, construction company, and so forth. So that's going to take time. So we wouldn't really be breaking ground if it were to be funded for two years.
And I guess the only, the only other comment that I had is, you know, somebody had sent me an email about, you know, a question about why we are only asking for the replacement and not, you know, a whole new building. And I just want to, you know, I guess say on the record that first and foremost, you know, 100% of my focus right now is on people in the buildings or then buildings themselves right now. I think we're talking about cutting, you know, professional staff tonight, and that is where my focus is. Obviously, we need, you know, safe and, you know, warm and, you know, healthy spaces for people to, you know, learn in, but I just don't think there's an appetite for, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars and, you know, tearing down schools that are still have use in them. And so I think our focus is more on the, you know, the people within the buildings more than anything and, you know, just trying to do what we need to do to, you know, have the space we need to offer the programs that we have. So any other questions or thoughts, Dr. Daly?
Just, just to add that through you, the, the MSBA does come out and evaluate all our buildings as a part of a process that they have. We had them out this year at all five of our schools to walk through. So we will get updated information about where these buildings are and their priority lists. We believe there's many more years of useful life at both of their schools. They definitely need some attention, but we've done boilers, roofs, various other projects at these schools, and we believe that there's, there are many years left at those schools. They are older than the batch in the middle and high school, but we believe that there's use there. And, you know, I agree with you that, you know, that's not in our immediate radar for full replacements of those programs.
Mr. Sutherland?
How, how much of the project would the MSBA consider as a rough percentage?
It's usually typically between 46 and 48% reimbursement.
And would we know early on if there was no appetite to draw this out for multiple years? Is there an early exit where they're saying, you know, we're not even considering this? Or how does that part of the process work?
My understanding is it's going to, everything has to get submitted by April 11th, it's Friday, and then there's going to be a sort of a approval process that they go through internally where they vet all the projects. We will probably not get noticed until sometime end of June, summer months of where we stand and whether it's even going to be entertained to go into the pipeline and move forward to the board for further consideration. Probably at a fall meeting, a fall meeting of the board.
Okay. So I see the language of the resolve. Do you just need to do that as a motion?
Somebody does, yes.
So who would like to read? Can you read this all the way into here? So is this just a motion or?
Just resolved.
Do I just read it as it is and then?
Let's do it as, let's do it as a motion and then, and then at the end, I would have the chair sign a statement that says the same.
Okay.
So just resolved?
So yeah, I guess do the motion to accept the following, I guess?
A motion to accept the following resolved. Having convened in an open meeting on April 7th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Committee of North Reading, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize a superintendent to submit the Massachusetts School Building Authority to, authority to the Statement of Interest Form dated April 2025 for the J. Turner Hood Elementary School located at 289 A. Haverhill Street, North Reading, Mass., which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement of in addition to obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs consistent with state and approval local requirements. The statement includes a description of the condition of the modular units at both the J. Turner Hood and the E. at the Little Elementary Schools and their replacement with a permanent structure at the J. Turner Hood Elementary School. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment to the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of North Reading to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Good job.
Second.
We need a, we have a motion, we have a second. Can you repeat? I'm just kidding. Any discussion on this?
For the record, that was the longest, two sentences.
Yeah.
Only two sentences. Great job.
Okay. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And in terms of signing, is electronic signature an offer? Do you need my actual signature this week?
I think I'll do a signature at the end of the evening, maybe.
Okay. That's fine if you need it. Okay. We're still before the time for the public hearing, so I don't want to call that yet. And we just have school fees, which I think we should discuss after that. So you all get to stay for the least exciting part of the meeting, and we're going to go through, I guess, staffing and the bids and donations and go from there, so.
So for a staffing update?
Yes.
This evening, we have Nicholas Mathieu is a long-term sub-physical education teacher at the middle school. Lindsay Richter is a food service worker for, is she for the district, Michael?
What's that? The past year?
Food service worker.
Yes.
Yeah. And then we did have a retirement announcement, Ms. Lori Capazudo, paraprofessional special education from the middle.
This is costly, missed.
So we will, as we do with all of our retirees, invite them to join us at a meeting in June.
Okay. Bids and donations?
Yep. I move that the school committee, the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $150 from Carrie Hurley, from the Carrie Burley, Hurley Bar Foundation to support Brittany Morris, those hockey, field hockey fundraising efforts at the high school. Wow. One sentence and I couldn't.
Do we need John to read these or what? Need a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $150 from Park Street Veterinary Clinic to be used toward the baseball program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
Aye. Not ready yet.
Any discussion? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $200 from Gillian Hodge to be used toward the baseball program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $100 from Kristen Turkot, sorry if I mispronounced that, to be used toward the baseball program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
I've, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $50 from Ryan Fitzgerald to be used toward the baseball program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
I move, one more.
Yeah.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of $50 from Carrie Ann Verdonk to be used toward the baseball program at the high school.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much. No grants, no overnight trips.
At this time?
School committee, social media. I saw some social media. I am a following.
Do we want, do we want to wait until after the hearing? Does it may dictate what we discuss after or are?
About what? The post? We can come back to this for what to post, but do you want to just give an update on what you guys have done?
Yeah. Okay. So we are live online on, it seems like every social media platform. So thank you for the DT team and Dr. Daly for getting us set up. We are officially over 100 followers on Facebook in 48 hours. So we are, we're starting, starting small and getting bigger. It's, everything seems to work. We're able to follow policy on all the social media platforms, locked for commenting, making sure that we're pointing to the appropriate meetings. I think we are, we're really ready to go. And actually, what's interesting about this is in the background, you can see all of the metrics, the data, when people look, when they respond, they give you tips on when you might want to post based on when people want to read. So I think we should be able to strategically use that information about when to post for meetings to get bigger attendance groups and what the timeline is to do that. So we are live on Facebook, Instagram, Threads, Twitter, Blue Sky, and X.
So you don't have those either?
Neither did I until 48 hours ago. So we are, we are live, ready to go.
So you're going to be posting to all of those?
For now.
Okay.
So it's a lot, so it will be set up. We're working and Dr. Daly got us up. We have a Canva account, a school Canva account that I'll be able to link. So then we will be able to use the templates, generate it, and then have it pushed to the platforms. But there's still a lot of, I'll admit, a lot of mechanical things to get it working. So once I get it in, I'll write up probably a worksheet, work instruction on how, how to do it. Some of the platforms don't let you lock it down until after you post, so like Twitter will let you lock it down. So anytime we tweet anything, it'll automatically be locked, no comments, whatever. The other ones, you have to go in after you post and lock it down. So I want to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to weird behavior on social media in the first month of having it. That's okay to everybody. And then we'll roll that out and probably as we get closer to town meeting, I'll have something ready that we can more automate and be ready to go.
Makes sense. Well done.
Yeah. Well, thank you for doing that. I mean, looks really good and yeah, you can see we got a huge attendance for posting, so.
It's not seven o'clock.
I know. Dr. Daly?
Mr. Buckley, through you, the handle, if you just want to give it out for, across all platforms is?
At NRPSSC.
NRPSSC. Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I told Dr. Daly, I said my family was actively laughing at me when I was trying to get Facebook accounts created because that's the most onerous process in the entire world. Imagine saying you're a government official and having to prove it. That was the most fun part of the.
Yeah.
Well done.
Thank you for taking that out.
That was fun.
Okay. Let's do subcommittee updates here. CIPC met on March 26th and April 3rd. Mr. Sutherland?
We began the ranking process. A fair amount of smaller projects ended up above the line, so as it stands right now, I think all of the, shortly, the school modular project, I believe everything will be put on, in on-town meeting, a town meeting warrant for approval. So the media boards and then of course the hood roof.
Yeah.
The hood roof will be bonded, and then the, the new TVs will be part of, most likely come out of free cash.
Finance planning team. Mr. Friedman?
Yeah, we met last Friday. Still a lot of discussions across, across both select and school to try and finalize budgets, to lock down things like, like healthcare, which if people don't know, just generally, it's gone up double digits the last couple of years. This year unfortunately is following that trend, so we're looking to see what options exist to try and mitigate that. But that is something that's going to play pretty heavily in school, but in not just school, town budgets, but it will have a trickle down effect into schools for the foreseeable future. So that's another factor that goes into all of this. The rest of it is really just what we're going to be talking about in a little bit in terms of impact of, of revenue not matching spending for, for the town. And that's, that's where we are.
And I'll just add a few things. Something we'll see in a little bit. Number one, new revenue, I think Mr. Connolly will talk about. The town did say that it looks like there's some more new growth than anticipated, which will help lessen the burden a little bit. And as you said, we'll talk about health insurance. The other thing that was talked about was capital improvement projects, and there was a long discussion on that where when you look going out, there's a lot of capital projects that are not getting funded. And the, the way that the capital improvements are being funded is through free cash in most respects. And as cuts are being made, there's less and less free cash that is being returned each year. And so there was a, a lot of discussion about how we can continue to fund capital projects if free cash is not going to be generated. And, you know, Don Calhoun was there and he spoke about how it's dwindling and how in a few years, we're going to basically not have the money to do any of these capital projects. And so it was just, again, another aspect of this where free cash is being used to help supplement the budget each year, but also to pay for capital projects. And if that doesn't happen, then what are we going to do? So it was kind of, the long and short of it, CIP scheduled to meet on April 10th at 8:00 AM, finance planning team at April 11th at 8:00 AM, fine arts subcommittee April 17th at 3:15, athletics subcommittee May 21st at 12:30. Dr. Daly, you want to do the administrative report?
Sure. Just an update, we had last week, we had panels for staff and the administrative council on April 1st, and for parents on April 2nd in the evening with our two finalists for the, for the principal at the EFL Elementary School. Later this week on Friday, we will take a small team of administrators to the sites and do some panels there. The candidates are preparing panels of parents, administrators, teachers, and stakeholders so we can hear more about them as a candidate. And my plan would be then to hopefully make a decision the following week before break on the next principal.
And I'll just say, I think the process was excellent, as was one with the high school, but it just seems like a very thoughtful process. And even though ultimately this is your decision, I think it was great that you were able to get feedback from a lot of different stakeholders and see the people because, you know, these roles involve talking to different people. It's talking to students, it's talking to parents, it's talking to, you know, colleagues, you know, managing teachers, talking to other administrators. And so I think it was great to provide the opportunity to have, you know, time with the candidates with all the various groups that they would be working with. And so I thought it was very well run and appreciate you doing that. So thank you.
We learned a lot from every phase of the process. We really do. And then just the Student Opportunity Act, we are getting ready to submit that. It's something we are working on here. Unfortunately, you know, as we talk about what we have to submit for the Student Opportunity Act is, you know, we have to choose some of our goals, just to repeat it one more time for everyone. You know, our goal, we have to, we have a menu of things to select from. One of the choices is for free universal pre-K. We have an exemption because we are one of less than 15, it's probably about 12 districts that have any kind of a charge for kindergarten tuition. And so we are supposed to be coming up with a plan with the Student Opportunity Act to reduce that tuition. I think as we know, that is something that we're not going to be able to do due to the budget. At the very least, we're, we're kind of continuing with the reduction from where it was last year with no, with no change. But I do still have to submit all the paperwork. I've gathered data from the community. There's still a commitment, small sample size, but those that participated are still largely in favor of the goals that we're working toward for, for those purposes. That's all that I had at this time.
Okay. And as I'm stalling, I'm going to, I'm going to take this opportunity to read something as correspondence that was sent for the budget, a correspondence about the budget. Rob and Mira Reynolds were unable to attend tonight, but wrote a letter to the school committee that I'll read here. Thank you for taking the time to review these comments. We are Rob and Mira Reynolds and currently have a child in the sixth grade at North Reading Middle School and a child in the ninth grade at North Shore Academy, which is part of the North Shore Educational Consortium. Our ninth grader was outplaced earlier this year due to a disability that requires enhanced services in a specific environment that cannot be provided by NRHS. We are providing these comments to address the proposal to cut special education staff in the district. We understand that you are in an impossible situation with a growing budget gap resulting from the town's rejection of last year's proposed override. We do not feign to know how to mitigate the challenges you are facing. We simply want to offer our experience for you to consider as you make some impossible choices. When our older child was in sixth grade, she suffered a medical emergency that required her to miss the last quarter of school. With significant planning and assistance, she managed to return to North Reading Middle School for seventh and eighth grade. We found that her ability to return and remain in the middle school for those two years was completely due to the efforts of her exceptional special education team. Without such a specialized, dedicated team of individuals, she would, she would have been placed out of district much earlier than she ultimately was. If any member of that team, any special education teacher, specialist provider, or paraprofessional had been eliminated from the staff, she would not have made it through those two years. We find it highly likely that removing special education professionals from the roster will result in higher out of district costs that will far surpass the savings associated with eliminating those positions. Further, since many special education professionals work in general education classrooms, they end up supporting a lot of, a lot more students than just those they are placed to assist. It won't only be special education students who suffer from those lost positions. Thank you for taking the time to review these comments, and please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions. Regards, Rob and Mira Reynolds. So, Dr. Daly?
If you would like, I can, the student representative group still meets, drafts the report. I can read that report, even though there's no one here.
Sure.
If you like, so.
Sure.
They came together today. Mr. Lepret was there with, with the students that were represented. For notable academic matters, they noted that quarter four starts today, April 7th. World of STEM team with Helena Bryan, Vanessa Steinmeyer, Kelly, Quinn Kelly, won third-place award at the MSEF State Science Fair. Was that at Gillette Stadium? Is that where that was? And Ms. Caulfield was, was there with them, brought them there, correct?
Ms. Verdonk, yeah.
The acceptance emails for the National Honor Society were sent out on Friday, April 4th. For fine arts, both the chorus and band received silver medals this weekend at the MICA Festival. Winner percussion received first place in their division with a score of 85.15 at NESBA. The percussion championships, that's eight points higher than last year. This is a newer program. For notable athletic matters, girls softball had a home opener last week, boys lacrosse had a game, has a game tonight at four, and Hamilton went them. And girls lacrosse has a game this Thursday. They have the junior prom on April 4th at Hillville Country Club. From all reports, everything went very well. It was a wonderful evening. Espered screenings start this week. There's something for everybody here. Espered screenings start this week. There's something for everybody here. Espered screenings for ninth graders the week of April fourteenth to seventeenth. And the core measurement survey, which Ms. Liquid presented along with the middle school, high school is starting, uh, is is out for all grades, I believe, at middle school also. It's this week. And then the reality fair for juniors is also this week. Those were their reports, and I don't have the student report to share with you, but that is the what the group came up with.
Great.
Look at that, six fifty nine.
Yeah. And then just for future business, we'll have to talk about whether we need a budget workshop after this. But future meetings, we're we're doing the tour of the of the elementary schools as our next meeting. So April twenty eighth we'll be at the hood school and we'll have the budget vote then. Uh, May twelfth, we'll be at the bachelor school. Um, and May nineteenth, we'll be doing school committee reorganization at that point in time. And then May nineteenth, we'll be at the little school and June ninth, this town meeting, and we'll meet before that. So without any further ado, now we'll go back and I just want, I want to open officially the budget, then twenty twenty six budget hearing. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Connolly to do the initial presentation. And we'll, basically what we'll do is we'll hear the initial presentation, the school committee might have some questions or comments, and then we'd love to hear from anybody that wants to speak up about um anything after that. Mr. Connolly.
Well, here, thank you. There are some copies of the presentation slides and forms up here. Yes. So um, as Chairman Buckley mentioned, we do have a kind of a more of a brief overview presentation um to just talk about the highlights of the fiscal twenty six school budget. We have done a couple other presentations um at this point, um, a couple of weeks ago, and we did a budget webinar a little more than a week ago. So essentially, what I'm gonna do is talk about some of the budget challenges that are at play and with the with the school budget and kind of why we're sort of in these year after year, it seems to be, you know, revenue challenges with our with funding a school in in town budget. Gonna talk about some of the budget drivers. Um, we'll discuss a little bit about what a level services budget is because that is what's being proposed by the administration through the school committee this evening. And it's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, given some of the challenges that are at play with funding the school budget this year. Then we will get into the numbers. We'll talk about the budget priorities, um, what's changing from year to year. You can get a sense of where we're spending the spending our money. We'll talk a little bit about staffing and the priorities in terms of some of the positions that were not restored or not being recommended uh or being put forward to restore, even though we'd like to be doing that at this at this point. And we'll talk about what the current budget gap is and then plans to um that we're proposing to try to achieve a balanced budget. And we will get into user fee discussions and budget offsets as we move through through the presentation. So start with some of the challenges. Um, really, these challenges have remained when funding a school or a municipal budget for a number of years. There's really sort of a structural deficit, and this is not a North Reading issue. This is an issue across really uh the state, you know, the nation when we're looking at um school budgets, we have that are really, the revenue is capped at proposition two and a half. There's only so much we can increase revenue from year to year in a municipality. And we have expenses and fixed costs that grow at a much higher rate with health insurance costs, with maintenance costs, with utility costs, with everything that we have to fund to maintain um the schools and the buildings and meet our requirements. Those expenses are going, are just essentially growing at much higher higher rate than what the revenue is coming in. So as we start the budget process, we're already at the structural um deficit in to in school funding. And then we we have um limited ability to kind of raise additional uh revenue. We've, we had some S R grants coming off the pandemic that kind of kept us afloat for a number of years. This was a big conversation last year. Those grants kind of ran out in fiscal year twenty twenty four at the end of last fiscal year. So we've had to kind of adjust and move things into the operating budget. Um, and that was a challenge that we kind of overcame last year. And then we do charge unfortunately user fees and tuition costs for some optional programs. We would don't wanna be doing that, but it's just a reality to make sure we're meeting our obligations. So there's just many challenges in terms of, uh, you know, funding the school budget that we're, we have uncertainty with special education that we'll talk about tonight. It's always a driver of the school budget. It's the most sort of unpredictable line items, cost center in the budget, and that's just order to meet our mandates and and fund where we wanna meet our student needs um as we move move through the 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 budget process. So our budget drivers, these these drivers really have not changed in a number of years. Um, and this is really, these drivers are really consistent when you look at funding a school budget. So you're always gonna have contractual salary obligations to meet our salaries for our employees and our employee unions. Given that salaries are the largest part of a school budget, about eighty two percent, and that is a common stat um across the state and across the nation, that's always gonna be the biggest driver. So we have cost of living adjustments to meet those obligations. And because so much of the budget is is to meet is our personnel, which is the the heart of our budget, and what we do here in in North Reading and to meet our educational needs, that's gonna be the largest driver. We didn't have our operational fixed costs. So I mentioned earlier, these costs have been rising in rising, um, given inflation and given the needs, utility costs are going up, transportation costs are going up, our cost to maintain our buildings for HVAC needs, plumbing needs, boiler needs, roofing needs, all these things go up year after year. Um, and in a lot of cases, much more than the revenue that we're taking in. But we do need to meet those fixed costs to maintain our facilities, to maintain what we wanna do operationally for transportation of students. So that's a big driver, as we've seen some big increases year after year, and particularly these last few years with eight, nine, ten, and double um double rate in increases in transportation and and other other costs. What we're, what we're a little bit different this budget process is we're not recommending any new staffing positions. It's a level services and in this particular case, a level staffing budget. There's no major changes in enrollment that would have, would would drive a staffing increase currently in into next year, but we do look at that and look at our enrollment needs year after year. As you know, we did make staffing reductions last year to balance the budget after the field override. And we've always at this point in the budget been recommending or discussing staffing needs driven by our strategic plan, which is known as N R P S twenty thirty. Unfortunately, given the funding reality of where where we stand, we're we're not putting any new staffing positions forward. But we are gonna talk about uh later in the presentations, and we have been talking about this since we started presenting the budget back in the beginning of March, what those priorities are by the administration, so the community is aware. We would like to be very much like to be standing here talking about some of the key positions we would like to be restoring and positions that we would like to be funding as part of our strategic plan. Special education costs, always a a driver of any school budget. Just because it is unpredictable and we have seen these rates increase in the area of special education, whether they be our out of district transportation and tuition costs, uh, where appropriate, we do you know, send students out of district to be educated appropriately. There's transportation costs, there's tuition costs to that, to do that. And those rates uncontrollably to us have been going up at a high, high rate, you know, double digit increases in in tuition costs, fourteen percent a couple of years ago that we had to um deal with. And we're looking at twenty five, thirty percent increases in transportation. So um, that's been a challenge. And then we always work with our special education um staff and Cynthia Cona is here here tonight, the director, to um allocate resources internally to um educate students when appropriate in district, and we always are working at our in district programming to to order to do that effectively. But that's always gonna be a big, a big driver of the school budget. So what is a level services budget? Um, that's what we're putting forward this fiscal year as a as a recommendation. That's our our priority is to achieve level services. It's really staffing levels and educational services that exist in this current school year today would carry forward into next year. Now, if there was an enrollment increases at any level or any particular grade, we would be looking at um potentially staffing increases that could be driven by enrollment. Now, we don't have that. It's pretty static or there's not major changes. So what we're recommending, or what we've been recommending is a level staffing budget with no new staff recommendations. We're just looking at adjustments to meet those contractual salary obligations. It does include no restorations of staff that were reduced last year and no new staffing based on our N R P S, our strategic plan initiatives at this point. It's funding needed to support specialized programs for our high need student population. And it's adjustment increases to our out of district costs for tuitions and transportation that I spoke of spoke of earlier. So that's really what we're looking for, looking for. Adjustments to utilities, transportation, maintenance needs, everything we have today carried forward in into next year. So if we get into the numbers and what our preliminary budget request is, we are looking at a request FY twenty six preliminary budget of about a little more than forty one million, three hundred seventy seven thousand, eight hundred and one dollars. That's a little bit more than a two point two million dollar increase over our current fiscal year twenty twenty five budget. If we look at these major expense categories that we do track, salaries and instructional costs, our operations and maintenance costs, transportation and tuitions, I think you can see many of those drivers kind of at at play as we look at the the increase from from one year to the next. And this is, these are some of the the challenges that as we as we move forward. If you look at this next uh pie chart, uh, as I mentioned earlier, salaries and compensation in a school budget is always gonna be the largest piece of the pie at about eighty two percent. We then have our other other costs that you can see in, what I always like to kind of point out in looking at this pie chart is if you're looking at a little bit more than a forty one point three million dollar school budget request, many of that amount, those amounts are fixed. You know, we certainly have to meet our contractual salary obligations with our staff. We have to meet our um utility obligations, our maintenance obligations, our contracted services that we have for a variety of 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 operational services to transport students and so forth. So when you look at that, there's not a lot of discretionary spending with supplies, materials, professional development, and sort of equipment that's remaining. So much of what we do is sort of a fixed, a fixed budget from one year to the next to to meet level services. This chart breaks down the changes from fiscal twenty five to fiscal twenty six to meet the recommendation in the level services budget that is being presented. So the final um FY twenty five budget was thirty nine million, one seventy one, nine hundred and seventy one dollars. These are the changes that got us to that two point two million dollar increase, the major changes. So as I mentioned, we have our contractual salary obligations, existing staffing levels to meet those those needs. Was the largest change from year to year. Again, that's always the largest driver, as I mentioned earlier. Our out of district tuition increases, as we have seen an increase in students being educated outside the district. We are currently at forty five students being educated outside the district, which we budgeted, you know, forty this year. So we've we've seen an increase there. We've had to adjust the budget accordingly. Transportation and contractual services in this area has gone up. We've seen the high rates of transportation go up. And we've worked very hard to to control those costs and to share those costs with other communities by participating in a consortium. But I think just that market with the shortage of drivers and the challenges of fuel costs that those rates have gone up for everyone, and we've had to adjust the budget for those those increases. Circuit breaker is a reimbursement that we get from the state to helps offset our transportation and tuition costs. So we're seeing as those costs and that's baseline costs rise from year to year, we take in more reimbursement dollars than next year. So we're also seeing a higher amount of reimbursement dollars coming in through the state. So that's why that that offset's higher than it has been. And then with regular busing and utilities and our maintenance needs, those increases are have also gone up. And we've had to adjust the budget for those as well. Because of these challenges and these big increases in these operational costs, we have worked hard to try to leverage all areas of funding and grants in our revolving accounts, uh, whatever may exist um to try to lower that request or the lower our appropriation that we're asking the community to support. And we've done that by finding additional sixty thousand dollars in those in grants and revolving accounts to help bring down the cost of transportation. Then we have our supplies and classroom materials that we've seen shipping costs go up. We've seen inflationary driven costs go up. We've seen the cost of paper is higher. Everything is higher. Software um increases year to year for classroom and technology is higher. So we've had to make those adjustments to deal with these increases, just to continue the same services and supplies and materials that all the schools and teachers and and support staff are used to seeing in their classrooms today. To have the same access to that educational software and technology, we've had to make increases. So all in all, those are the major increases that get us to why we're looking at a level services budget that's five point six percent higher than the current fiscal year or two point two million dollars higher. Typically, a level services budget, the historical ten year average is probably has been more in that three point five to four point percent range. And we're looking at an amount at five point six percent because of these high increases that in most cases are sort of out of our control that we're dealing with. That is not a North Reading issue. In many cases, it's an issue across the state, across the nation when we look at these increases from year to year. So we talked about this at the preliminary budget presentation. We would love to to be standing up here making recommendations to restore some of what we consider the high priority positions that were reduced last year. We did cut about a little over twelve, twelve, you know, F T E equivalent positions. The administrative team meets and talks about it this, and my administrative team, principals and directors are here tonight to answer questions and support this process. Uh, we don't take any of these decisions lightly. It's been challenging, um, you know, years over these last few years, putting the budget together. And certainly, the administrative administration is sort of, if we were to be recommending high positions to be restored, these areas would be high on the top of that list. Looking for adding support to our early uh childhood programs in in particularly in the kindergarten level that were reduced last year. Having that support early on in in um a child's education to provide early intervention that may be needed early on is essential. So that was is high on the top of the list, and the and the principals have spoken about that passionately the the need to to do that. So that was a loss. There was a classroom teacher that was reduced, and we do have I think one cohort of students at one of the elementary schools in the primary grades that's a little bit above class size that we would be our guideline between eighteen and twenty two students. So that would would have been a priority for restoration. And then those academic support tutors that we experienced through the S R funding, that COVID pandemic funding for a number of years that really helped um provide that support, academic support systems to students, particularly in grades kindergarten, first and second grade, in areas of literacy and math, they they were essential, and the loss of those those tutors has been has been felt. So those would certainly be a priority. There were certainly other positions that were reduced that we would wanna be recommending all of those, but would ask to say, what are the top priorities? I think this is where where we um discussed. So our strategic plan, typically, we are recommending positions driven by our strategic plan to achieve our goals and to try to move the district forward. And what we would call a modified level services budget, it's level services, everything that we have this year carried forward to to meet our obligations, but it's also with a few additional enhancements to meet our our strategic plan, goals and objectives to move the district forward. First and foremost on that list is our objective to have a designated school adjustment counselor in all of our schools, at every elementary school, at the middle school and the high school, certainly. And there's um still, we have not yet achieved that. There's two elementary schools, the Hood and the Little, that share an adjustment counselor. So that that increase would have achieved that. We we were working, um, discussed that a lot last year. Unfortunately, it was it was cut to balance the budget at the end of that process. We wanna continue to enhance that academic interventionist model, the tutoring model and bringing professional positions in math coaches um to help those early interventions, uh, strategies that we have and move the curriculum forward. And then our curriculum leadership model, um, we wanna continue to move that forward. And we were able to fund this, you know, STEM coordinator, which has been essential in aligning curriculum and moving um the district forward in those areas, in the area of STEM. Um, and we wanted to to do that in the area of humanities. So these would be the high priority positions driven by our strategic plan. So budget summary, um, again, as I mentioned, we have a bu- general fund operating budget requests that we would consider a level services budget of a little bit more than forty one point three million. That does not tell the whole story. We have a variety of grants, state grants, federal grants, revolving accounts that we assess user fees for, which we're gonna talk about this evening, tuition costs for to make the North Reading experience what it is for the students. That funding is a little bit more than, you know, three and a half million dollars, in this case, three point seven million dollars. As we've tried to leverage all of the grants that are available to us to just to fund um our budget. So in reality, when we look at all of our funds, it's a little bit more than forty five million dollars that we're spending on education for the North Reading students. Um, and that still doesn't tell the whole story because as you saw earlier this evening, if you were here, we accepted a variety of gifts and donations to help fund athletic programs and other programs, fine arts, technology and classroom materials. So we have a variety of school committee accepted donations that the annual average has been about two hundred and fifty thousand amazingly, that we do every meeting, there's six, seven, eight, or up to a dozen gifts that we're accepting. And then we have our P T O and P T A A's that are hard at work and our other support uh booster groups that are hard at work and just their budgets alone to help fund enrichment programs, field trips, classroom materials. In some cases, teacher appreciation um days and so forth, their annual budgets are about seventy five thousand dollars. So even though we ask the community for an amount each year that they to to support at the annual town meeting with our grants, state and federal grants that come in, revolving accounts, as you know, we assess user fees for 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 funding and the gifts and donations and the P T Os and P T As. There's a lot more of that part of funding that's out there. So this is, it gives you a sense of our budget offsets um for those that we are, those programs that we are assessing a user fee or tuition costs for to help fund the North Reading uh experience. So obviously, we know the the regular busing contract, we've assessed a user fee for that the last number of years. Those costs have gone up. As you can see, the direct cost to fund those twelve buses each and every day for the hundred and eighty days for the school year is now up to over nine hundred and eighty thousand. Is now up to over nine hundred and eighty thousand. The amount that we take in based on the current user fee is only about thirty two percent of that amount. Our athletic budget for salaries, coaches, all expenses. The amount that we take in funds about thirty three percent of tho- of those direct costs for that program. Our extracurricular activities for clubs at the middle school and the high school. You can see the amount that we're spending on the advisors and so forth and the amount that we are, we're taking in based on the user fee. And the same for performing arts, our fine arts programs. And then we have our tuition based programs for the full day kindergarten and the, in the preschool program. So there was a time, I stood up here five, six, seven years ago where I would put this chart up and we were close to about fifty percent. Of the user fee revenue that we were taking in, the tuition based revenue was offsetting the direct costs of those programs. Because those, those programs have grown and the expenses have grown, bussing rates have been double digit for a number of years now. And we've seen high increases on the athletic end, on the fine arts end for ice rental and trainer costs, variety of expenses that we've had to adjust the budget for. The user fees typically have not kept pace with the rise in some of those expenses, so now you're seeing those. That funding level be more at thirty five percent on the annual average or thirty six percent. So you, we don't like to talk about user fee increases and it's been a longstanding goal of the, this committee since I've been here for twelve years, I know that. To try to not talk, not increase user fees, unfortunately with the challenges and everything that we have to. Face on the operating side, it's become a reality that we have had to talk about user fee increases. And tuition increases and preschool increases this year. So we'll get into it in a moment, but the current user fee is, is in the fourth column here and then. In our budget workshop, the committee did talk about to order to raise that baseline of revenue to help offset. Some of these direct cost increases to be able to mitigate the, the budget gap that does exist, which you'll see in a moment. To bring in some additional revenue, those were some of the increases that, that we, we would be discussed. It has been our longstanding objective to try to move towards universal free full day kindergarten. We made strides at doing that over these last few years, and we've been able to reduce that tuition from four thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Down to two thousand and five hundred. Which is still, we're still behind in what we wanted, we wanted to be free, universally free by this point, by fiscal year twenty twenty five. So that's something we don't want to take a step back in, we are lagging in the state. In the fact that we're one of twelve communities still assessing a, a tuition cost for full day kindergarten. So we've discussed it certainly internally. Preschool program, again, we would love not to have a, a, a tuition, it is a reality. We are potentially proposing an increase there. And I think that's driven by a lot of the private day tuition costs are much higher than what we're charging here as well. But again, this is a reality that we're faced with based on the budget challenges that we're dealing with. So what is the current budget gap? From our, what we're asking the community to support for a level services budget, if you look at salaries and expenses. Again, it's a little bit more than forty one million and three hundred thousand dollars. Five point six percent, as I mentioned earlier, over fiscal twenty five. That current budget gap as, as we've been working towards, it's, it's a little bit of a fluid number, it changes. But the last, the last budget gap number that we, with the finance planning team, town administrator and town finance director. And select board members and finance committee chairs and vice chairs was a little more than one point four million dollars, one million four hundred seventy six thousand and twenty three dollars. So obviously a lot of, a big challenge and a lot of work to be done to, to bring that into balance. There are, as Chairman Buckley mentioned earlier in the meeting. When we talked about the finance planning team and that is the chairs and the vice chairs of all the major boards, finance committee, select board, school committee. Myself, Dr. Daley, town administrator, town finance director. Meet weekly at this point to put our heads together, to try to think creatively like we've always, like we've done and work collaboratively together. To look at the, the funding coming into the community, the expenses. Kind of at a big picture to see what we can do to, to reduce the gap and, and restore positions and save positions. And there is the potential for new growth increases as we look at. That, that funding formular, so we think there's, that's a reality at this point in, in, as we approach the end of the budget process. And then we are, health insurance is always one of the biggest drivers on the expense fixed cost side, the cost for benefits, that is not. Those have been, expenses have been increasing significantly over the last number of years and this is not a North Reading issue, this is a statewide national issue. But we are entertaining potential carrier changes. That would help bring those fixed costs and those rate increases down. If all those things would help lessen that one point four million budget gap to the school, school community. So those are things that the finance planning team is discussing each week and we're looking at options and playing with scenarios. That would help lessen the burden of the school department as well as the town side that has a gap as well, to help bring that one point four million dollars down. So as we look at some of the conversations the administrative team has been having internally. And these are very difficult, you know, budget deliberations and conversations that occur because we don't. Like to be here and talking about reductions to, to programs and staff. And these are, we're also discussing this in the budget workshop in the beginning of, of March. The, this would be a plan to help shorten that budget gap that does exist, that, that one point four million, we've identified about a little more than a million dollars of potential. Unfortunate reductions to both staffing and expenses as well as a combination of user fee increases that I showed earlier. That would help bring us more into balance to balance the school budget. So there's a potential to do some administrative restructuring based on some attrition that's occurred. And retirements that are occurring this year with administrative staff to help achieve some savings. There'd be less administrators kind of on, in, in district, maybe some savings. Looking at class sizes and trying to, reductions to elementary teachers, reductions to some middle school teachers. In particular programs, computer science and world languages, which is, is. Certainly difficult to, to look to and think about program reductions, reductions to some high school and teaching staff. Looking at enrollment and so forth, special education potential of elective courses being impacted. Redesigning some of our special education elementary, elementary programs to try to achieve some savings. Looking at our special education support staff and where it is. Looking at those internal programs, enrollment, and trying to achieve some sa- some savings and some reductions. And then we'd also go back and look at our expense budgets, which is always a challenge because they're already. You know, difficult in, in some cases, underfunded to make some reductions that there, which could impact classroom materials, textbooks, technology even in, into the classroom. And then looking at, the last item would be looking at these user fee increases for all areas, busing. Athletics, fine arts, potentially preschool, potentially kindergarten, would all be talked about. Facility rental, we do rent our space and the revenue that we take in for renting our, our classrooms, our gymnasiums. Our, our theater, our theaters, our cafeterias to various programs does help offset the budget, so we would be getting more. Kind of aggressive in doing that, increasing those rental rates. So all in all, this would be about almost eleven point, you know, a little more than ten, ten positions. And it does, it does add up to a little bit more than a million dollars of reduction, this doesn't get us all the way there. The gap remaining based on what I presented in the earlier slide would still be about four hundred and thirty two thousand. The hope is that. In looking at some of the considerations that new growth, health insurance, you know, we could lessen that remaining amount. And not have to go any, any deeper in reductions to balance, but this is, these are all things that are being discussed, so we're, we're choosing to do this publicly and. And let everyone know this is what, what we, where things stand with the budget. So all in all, I mean, where is our, what can we conclude from our, our budget? The level services budget, again, it's not a fancy budget, it's not a lot happening there. If we were able to kind of meet those goals and objectives, we would be meeting our first and foremost, our contractual salary obligations. With our employees and employee, employee unions. We would be maintaining staff to keep the student and teacher ratios as is and keep the class sizes as is. Maintaining our health and safety staff, maintaining our staff to support our specialized programs for students in the high needs student population. Maintaining our staff to address that social and emotional support systems that have been so important for the last number of years. Continuing our one to one device program for our technology devices in district, meeting our operational needs. And continuing to maintain our four campuses and five schools appropriately. So where do we go from here, we're having the budget, uh, public budget hearing tonight on April seventh. There's been conversation that we could meet with the. Boards, select board, finance committee and school committee to continue to talk about the funding challenges and what we can do. The school committee budget vote is scheduled for April twenty eighth at the little school, the next meeting.
Hood school.
Sorry, hood school, and there could be a budget workshop that occurs between that. We always go to the finance committee shortly after the budget vote and then the annual town meeting is June ninth. So went a little bit longer than I was hoping for, about half an hour, open it up to any, any questions and I know there'll be a lot of discussion, thanks.
Okay, so first, I think, I want to get any questions from the committee, kind of hold our comments that we hear from everybody else too, but Dr. Daley? I did, I opened the hearing before. So real, real quick, any questions up, up front?
Yeah, what do you want us to do, can I go through all of them?
Yeah, go through, go through, go through.
I'll, I'll just do some of them because I, I know we're here to hear from the people. I just wanted to say first, this is my first year on school committee and. I didn't think I would be up here without restoring anything from last year and going through these cuts, so this is. I do want to thank you all for all of your hard work, it's amazing, they're really, really tough decisions, but this, but they're heartbreaking decisions. The first, the, the optimal class levels in the elementary schools, it's not optimal, but what are, what is that going to look like? And I've been in some of these classrooms and is there even room, there, some of them are, are tight, but what are, what are those going to look like?
So the ones that are being proposed. We would be essentially looking at class sizes in those areas that are currently at about eighteen and nineteen students class, going as high as about twenty five students per class.
Twenty five students, okay. That's a lot, okay.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay. And, you know, I also didn't think we'd be here in twenty twenty five talking about. Proposed cuts to foreign language and, and digital learning, things like that. I know foreign language at the middle school, Scott, I think you were for it when they brought it, brought it in, I don't have a middle schooler, so I'm not familiar with it yet. But how many kids is this impacting overall? How many kids take it in the middle school and then how many kids are also taking it again in, in high school and, and moving on consecutively or starting over or things like that?
All of our, all of our middle school students, there may be a few exceptions, but all of our students, part of what we proposed.
The, the program that we replaced was an exploratory program in grade seven, followed by required either French or Spanish in grade eight. What we proposed. Five, six years ago now, if we go back, we introduced both computer science and world language for half a year in sixth and seventh. The goal being that they could start to go deeper into their language to eventually be more successful. That then was a required class for all students in grade six for a half year, grade seven for a half year, same with computer science. That was a multiple year budget process, so we had to add positions, we changed the schedule, we made those accommodations, so that's where we've kind of arrived at. You know, we did, and Michael has this slide, this, you know, we talked about this last year, this was a part of why we went for the override. We were concerned last year, we're more concerned this year, I'm even more concerned next year, right, so this, this is the slide we had last year. When we talked about potential reductions for twenty six, twenty seven. And what we said were, you know, it's not going to be all these things, but these are the places we're going to have to be looking. And we certainly, you know, we talked about administrative coordinator positions, I know, I appreciate some of those people in the room tonight. We did have a mid-year resignation this year and so we're restructuring that position as opposed to looking at first created, first out. In that pecking order, but this world language, computer science, new program is where we're looking for that restructuring. And so that's the, the model at the middle school, there'd be another change to the schedule and there would be one. World language offering, one robotics offering and one computer science offering in grade six, seven and eight. So we still would have opportunities to explore world culture and language, it's just, it's going to look very different and it, it involves the reduction of, of staff and the, the impacts here. Just to be clear, when you see FTE in buildings, there are other things that are in place that might impact which buildings this, this affects, so. Due to, you know, seniority, licensure, program experience, all those different factors might impact other schools.
And then I, I think this is probably a scheduling issue, what, what's the difference between digital learning and computer science?
Sure, so digital learning, I'm just saying if there's anybody else here that wants to answer. So digital learning is the umbrella term for all of our learning in the district that is, you know, computer based. Computer science gets into, there's actually computer science standards that are part of the digital learning standards is a strand that we specifically focus on. So it's a standalone curriculum that we have computer science, so at elementary school, we have digital learning. In the classroom, but under that heading, they, they, they focus on computer literacy, computer safety, computer science and some of the other standards that are in there. In middle school, we start to break that out and we have like a computer science that we really spent a lot of time for two years on. We also did robotics, robotics was only offered in grade eight, correct? As, no, I'm sorry, it's only offered as a, a general arts, wasn't it, wasn't a standalone, and the computer science, we had it required for two years and then it sort of. Trailed off a little bit, so, you know, those are little things that we've always been talking about, how can we change this or tweak it a little bit too. So. Digital learning starts to, you know, we embed some of the literacy skills into our other classes in middle school, high school, we have them a little bit at the high school. We've worked that into our freshman seminar, we work into other classes. At high school, we have a digital learning and entrepreneurship department, within that department, we have computer science courses, but they also fall under STEM. We have robotics courses, Michelle, I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but do you want to speak just a little bit to some of the offerings we have at, at the high school? Under digital literary and computer science?
Oh, thank you. Robotics two is growing and, and competing. We have AP computer science classes, two of them. One didn't run this year because of enrollment, but you know, we're looking at our numbers now, so we'll see how that goes. We have web design. Which a lot of kids are really interested in, they, they're create, they use language, they're using the computer science languages. JavaScript is what they were looking at today, so I'm trying to think what else.
No, sorry, I didn't mean if we're in the spot, no, those, those all, those all sound wonderful and it's just a shame that their kids aren't going to have that middle school now to, to do things like that.
It's been about a fifteen year process to build this all the way up, this, we still will have.
There's, there still will be a through line, but it's going to be a little bit less time.
I just didn't know, I, I guess I was confused, I thought there was digital learning and computer science courses and I was just saying the kids coming into middle school now are the, have had their one on one devices. You know, they're the highest level of digital literacy that we'll have in the middle school, they've had it since kindergarten. So just wondering if there was other more remedial things that previously had been going on in the middle school, because not everyone had this, that, that could be looked at, just to.
Yeah, we're, we're constantly updating that curriculum because the kids coming in have what we used to teach in eighth grade, they're learning in third grade.
And the last question I have for now, if I could reserve some time for later, if, if possible. I, I mean, I have to ask, the administrative costs, how, how do we compare to our neighboring cities and towns? I know there's a position we're not replacing.
We got a slide on that.
So this does come up every year.
Yeah, I just want to, I just want to make sure.
I think it's good to share.
Yeah.
Wait till you see it.
Or everyone here.
I've seen it.
So we are at three, three percent.
And is this currently?
This is still where we're at.
Or is this with the loss?
Or is this with the loss of the?
This is currently.
Currently, so without replacing the.
Correct, yep.
So it'll go down.
It would go down directly, yeah. So sit below the state average.
Okay.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Jen set me up, so I'm going to ask a question.
I could just, just to clarify too, because I know it's come up, you know, we have two assistant superintendents um in this district. That's a title recognizing their many years of service to the district and to the role. Just to be clear, there is not a director of finance under Michael, there's not a director of curriculum under Sean. In many, many districts, Sean's role has about five different people. There's a title one director, a title nine investigator, a curriculum director, all these other things. This is all under Sean. Under Cynthia, there could be a director of nursing, a director of this, a director of that. She's sort of in charge of all those pieces. We wear many, many hats. Michael is the finance director. He's got a, a great team, but it's a small team and we've condensed over the years. So we, we do not have a lot of people working in the office. We share administrative assistance. We don't have a lot of administrative oversight. So we are, and, and just to be clear too, we are looking at making more efficiency in administration through reorganization.
Okay, well.
All right, I'll try to keep this quick. Um, again, thank you, Mr. Connolly, um, for your presentation. You always do such a clear and. Um, helpful job for someone like me who's not a numbers person to understand. Um, but just to piggyback a little bit on what Jen was saying about the administrative. Cost, which I, I, it's a very helpful slide. Um, this is just something that sort of comes up in my own head and I know it comes up in others. Um, I, you know, listening, um, is with the, some of the administrative positions, we have the new STEM position, for example. And um, looking forward, we have the I, um, the plan for a um. A position that would be, I guess, a humanities coordinator. Um, is there ever the consideration of having those administrative level positions have a small teaching load? In order to kind of stay current, stay teaching, keeping with um, you know, getting in front of students every day and then, you know, that wouldn't do anything for this year. But if that's a plan looking forward, I think that makes sometimes those administrative positions a little bit more um easy for people to understand and swallow perhaps on a budget. Basis, so.
Sure. Yeah, that's something that we always talk about as a possibility. It's. It's something that needs to be negotiated because you're taking teaching positions away from teachers. And so in some ways it sounds that way, but when it's, when it, when it's understood that those two sections right now are assigned to a teacher. If I assign those two sections to administrator, now I'm reducing by a point for a teacher.
Right.
And that's not something most unions are in agreement with. So we do have this discussion ongoing.
Right, I figure, and, and I know we've talked about it before, but if, if it comes to a point where there's a position that. Could be saved somehow because somebody is able to, you know, take a few classes. Again, um, complex.
It's not something that we, we, we revisited often as a discussion item and it comes from both sides sometimes, but we usually come to that place saying. It's not something that the, that there's interest in at the moment.
Um, and another just kind of general question, um, again, I know this has been asked to me and um, it's something that. Uh, is worth, worth talking about. Is there ever, you know, last year we went to the override and unfortunately it didn't pass. It was a big budget. Is there ever the potential of like an à la carte budget where you take something specific to town meeting? Like, we need to fund this, this, this. Is that, has that been done before? Is it successful? Is it impossible? Is it?
I'm happy to speak to, I mean, I, I think that's, there are many different strategies. As you mentioned, there's not a override um discussion at this point in time. Um, but there's, there's so many different ways to approach it. The town that I live in, that is how it's done. It's a school-only piece and it's, these are the pieces we need for the school. That's certainly an approach that could be taken. Through finance planning last year, that was not the approach we agreed upon. That's not where we got to. And I think the thinking now is that we need more support from the town. You know, unfortunately, the override did not pass last year. You know, if half the people who had children enrolled in the schools and half the people who live in town and work for the schools had voted, I think it would have passed. So that tells you something that there wasn't that support. So this is why we're here today, making the cuts that we said would happen without this support. It's a bigger issue. It's not a North Reading issue. Um, as Michael has mentioned and as I shared out, this is happening in towns across the state that are dealing with larger gaps than we have here. The only towns that really don't seem to have this are the towns that have a, a large influx of um, of growth or a large influx of um commercial in their town. So everyone's going through this, these issues that are state issues. We're working, you know, we had, as you know, the state rep and the, and the um. State senator here to talk about these issues at the state level that's overarching with education. But overrides and sometimes smaller overrides are more likely to pass than a large one and that could be the approach in the future. That's not something that's um currently being, being suggested.
So to, to that point, it might be useful if someone, I don't want to go too deep into it, but might be useful to uh understand the difference between a debt exclusion and override. One can be used, the debt exclusion can be used for basically earmarking specific projects, for example, the firehouse. It's specific for the firehouse, whereas an override is, is an increase basically to the tax. Um, that can't really be earmarked, so it becomes part of a general, uh, general budget. It, it, it's therefore difficult to then say, and this is really for everybody, um, it's therefore difficult to say, I want to use. Let's see, assume we, we say, okay, we need instead of ten million, three million or five million or whatever it is. These are the specific things that will get used for because it's an ongoing thing through time. And even though that money might be used for those specific things, one, the uh, priorities can change, but two, more importantly, it will outlive those projects. The, the, the money that comes in from that override outlives those specific projects because it's designed. For the eventuality that we're facing, that our increases are, expenses are more than the revenue coming in, greater than the two and a half percent. Anyway, I just wanted to describe the difference between those two things and why we can't just say, I want to restore five positions and just do that. Just so that everybody understands that if we could, we would, we would do that. So it's, it's a good point.
Um, and then, thank you, Jeff. And then just one final question because I think it helps illustrate the increase in costs and I'm sure you have this, um, Mr. Connolly. The increase of health insurance year over year, it's ma, it's massive. I mean, it is for everyone, not just the school system. So what was that increase um this year for the uh, the, the percentage cost?
So.
Yeah, I'm happy, I bet. So one thing that's still ongoing is originally Blue Cross Blue Shield came back with a sixteen and a half percent increase. They lowered it to fifteen point eight percent, but there is a proposal on the table to do a change of um health insurance provider. And so that is one thing that it's not in there yet. Um, Mr. Connolly had up, there was two of the things that might happen. There's going to be potentially more new growth, which might give us about three hundred thousand out of the deficit. And then if the, if the unions, both municipal and school side, vote to make a, a change from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Instead of having a fifteen point eight percent increase, it might be a five point five percent increase. And so that could end up saving about, on the school side, I believe, with about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So those are the two things that are still to be determined. So you see that there's about four hundred and thirty thousand that has not been addressed yet. So. We potentially have slightly more than that in, in additional revenue that could be coming in. But again, the, the unions have to vote on that and again, and it's not like it's found money. This is a significant change. I mean, if anybody, you all probably have health insurance right now and to go from one provider to another provider is a big deal. It's a big, it's a big ask of somebody and so that's ongoing at the same time right now.
And it was a lot of hard work to find it.
Right.
That was not, I mean, that didn't fall into our laps either. There was a lot of hard work to, to even find a different option for a provider, not to say we'll get it, but. A lot went into that.
But, but, but even within that, I mean, not to get even, even deeper, but that fifteen point eight percent is not being put into that budget, ten and a half percent is being put into the budget. Because we have what's called a PFA, a participating funding agreement that helps to offset some of the cost. But essentially what's built into the revenue plan right now is a ten and a half percent increase, but if we could cut it down by five and a half percent, that would save about two hundred and eighty thousand on the school side. So. Okay, this is Sutherland.
Just one, um, could you talk a little bit, um, maybe for Michael about the state of the revolving accounts? We talked a lot about user fees, we kind of go out, you know, we went through that a little bit. Can you talk a little bit um about the state of the revolving accounts and why there's a consideration on user fees for this year?
Yes, absolutely. So our revolving accounts, again, we take in a user fee for those programs. That I mentioned earlier. So again, just so everyone knows, the revenue that we take in for these programs by law has to be spent directly on those direct costs that, that user fee is supporting. Um, so we can't take an athletic fee and go support a classroom teacher or, or, or do some, do those types of changes. So over time, as we've seen these expenses and these programs grow with big, you know, rate increases for transportation or a variety of areas. And we've tried to keep that user fee level as much as possible. You know, we've had some increases a little bit the last year or two. But we haven't tried to, um, for a vast majority of years, that, that user fee was kind of the, the same. Um, it hasn't kept pace. So the, the amount of our reserve, I think is beginning at, has gone down in these revolving accounts. Um, so we're spending more money each year than the revenue that we're taking in. And um, we try to keep a little bit of a balance in these revolving accounts, not a lot, but we try to, you know, roll over a little bit of money. That's kind of appropriate to do that. And that, our ability to do that is being kind of compromised each year. So we're at a, we're at a, a place because we've tried to control the, you know, the amount of those costs that we put back to the community and the parents because we don't want to see increases. Is outpacing the, the expenses in of, of those programs. Um, and you know, there'd be pages in the budget book that kind of show that and that's the challenge that we're dealing with. So to prevent that and to try to keep pace with the programs and not impact services to, uh, because we, we all know that many of our students. Really, you know, thrive in these extracurricular programs and the fine arts and the athletics, it's really, really important. So we don't want to see any of these programs reduced. Um, that's why the user fee, um, unfortunately, the user fee increases are being discussed and considered. That makes sense, yes.
Okay. Couple of questions, um, and I know I'm asking leading questions here, but uh, uh, this goes out one year. For twenty-seven, twenty-eight, do you expect any of these costs to go down or grants to go up? In other words, what do you see for the future? And I think we know the answer, but like, it'd be good just to hear, like. Because we're not just thinking about next year, obviously we're thinking about uh years after that too.
Yeah, I mean, it's good, it's a good question. We don't really, at this point, anticipate a lot of these grants and be going up. If anything, it's going to be the opposite and that with what's happening at the federal level, which all comes back down to the state level. Um, so that is a concern. We're seeing in some cases grants that we relied on to support. Expenses year to year, like our mentoring program and our, our tutoring program for, for math and title one programs that we run at each of the, at our title one schools. Those are potentially going to be impacted and reduced in, into this, in, in the future. And we talked about last year, there's really no more of that pandemic emergency second relief funding available. Um, at this point, so if anything, we're going to see the opposite.
Right, so things aren't getting better on their own.
Right.
Next thing is in terms of.
You want to add to that, Miss Connet, yeah?
Yeah, sorry.
No, that's okay. Everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, and, and just for the room, the microphones are not for the room, they're for NorCam. So that's why we pass it around. You won't hear anything more in the room, but it will help be heard on NorCam.
Thank you. Um, just to sort of elaborate a little bit more on that, I think fear is exactly in what you're asking of us. What, what does the future hold? If we have to continue year after year to cut, especially these positions in the general education environment that are providing math intervention, reading intervention. At an early age and we start stripping that down year after year, the only entry point for a student to receive support is special education. And then at that point, that cost is a, a cost that stays and those costs are not going down, um, as we know. And so just to sort of, you know, how, how do you see that playing out?
It's a snowball effect both for education as well as cost.
Right.
Yep. The other thing, uh, and again, sort of a leading question, when looking at especially what to cut. Uh, I assume one of the key factors is enrollment in those, in those areas. So, you know, if the overarching principle is do the most for the most. Um, I'm assuming cuts are where we have lesser enrollment. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, yep.
Correct. Okay. Okay, so I have a few initial thoughts and then we'll, we'll open it up for public comments here. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Connolly for all the hard work here. Um, and really Dr. Daly and all the administrators in the room. Just so everybody knows, you know, a lot of towns don't do anything near, or schools do the, anything near the level of detail that Mr. Connolly does. And you've seen a lot of districts get into a lot of trouble because they did not budget appropriately and so they're dealing with deficits within the current year. Not to mention the future. And so I just, I think it's worth noting right now that even in hard budgetary times, we are still in a really solid financial situation and that's really because of Mr. Connolly. And. I, I'd also just like to say that when looking at cuts, and so I've been looking at these numbers in these positions a lot longer than other people from the finance planning team. And so I won't speak to the specifics right now, we'll talk a little bit more later about that. But I think the idea across the board was to not have any one school, any one population deal with all of the cuts. And so a lot of it was looking at what was the last that was added, but really trying to make sure that we're balancing it, you know? I think in, in some years when we've cut just a couple, some of those cuts have fallen more on the elementary schools than middle and high school, to be honest with you. I think this year it's a little bit more disproportionate on the middle school. Which stinks, but it's, you know, I think part, part of that's population driven, but I appreciate all the administrators coming together to look at it because. You know, I, I think everybody wants to look at what's in the best interest of the student population as a whole and so it's hard and it's, but I appreciate the work that goes into that. We keep talking about a cut to level services. Um, the reality is we can't forget we cut fifteen point seven positions from what we said were level services last year. Which included twelve and a half actual positions, so there were supposed to be three point, we needed three point two new positions last year to have level services and instead we cut twelve and a half. This year we're talking about cutting another ten and a half. So that's twenty-six and a half positions in the schools in two years. So if we're really talking about the cuts, we're talking about from twenty twenty-four, we will be cutting twenty-six and a half positions from the schools. And so it is a big deal, you know, somebody talked about an override, what happens? The select board is the one that has to put it on the town warrant, you know, there's a town election coming up, everybody go out and vote. It's an important issue, you have to be, be, be there. And the reality is it can't come from five select board members or five school committee members, it has to come from the public. People have to want it, you know, people, like there's a few people in this room that did a lot to, for the override last year, but there's a lot of people that didn't even know it was happening. And so you have to be angry, you have to say, do I want to live in a town where we're cutting, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen positions every year in order to keep up with inflation? And that's really where we're at right now. And so again, it's, it's the choice of the public, um, and I hope people do get angry about some of the cuts because it stinks. Want to talk very, very broadly, the other thing that's coming up a little bit is the whole, the sharing between the town and the, you know, the municipal and the school side. The reality is everybody's in a bad position and so, you know, the whole like seniors versus students is just, it, it's a discussion we don't want to be having. You know, the reality is there's not enough money in the pot from the very beginning. There is talk of people saying, we're going to go to town meeting and, and try to defund the schools even more, you know, it's important. We're going to go with a balanced budget to town meeting, but it's important that people show up and vote there because there could be an amendment that defunds the schools even more if we don't do that. And so it's really important to be out there and talk about it. We are working really collaboratively with the select board, you know, with the, you know, town administrator on all of these cuts. And so everybody's feeling pain. They're having a discussion right now about the need to add firefighters and that means probably cutting other positions. And so it's not just happening in this room, it's happening throughout. And so just, you know, make sure we keep that in mind. Um, and then just one quick comment that will open up the public comment here, but on the user fees, one thing that, when Mr. Connolly put up the, you know, the percentage that's being funded. Basically what he was telling is two point three million of those user fees is coming out of our. basically what he was telling is two point three million of those user fees is coming out of our general budget. Now, some of those have to, some of those have to because we have to educate, you know, kids at least for half day for kindergarten. We have to educate certain students full day for kindergarten. We have to educate certain students for pre-kindergarten. We have to bus certain students. But a big portion of that are the things that we don't have to do. And so that's what we're talking about. And to Mr. Sutherland's point, we'll have a lot, larger discussion just on user fees after this. But every single reserve account is in a worse position this year than it was last year. Literally every single reserve fund that we have, we spent more than we took in last year. And so every single reserve fund is smaller. The athletic reserve fund could not operate. We have to raise the fees or we would be dipping more into the operating budget. And so we'll have a further discussion on that, but just, I just want to kind of overarching talk about the issues. And so, you know, when we're getting into, I don't want to make this cut, I don't want to make that cut. The problem is, we don't cut that, we have to cut something else unless we go to the polls and say we don't want to cut anything. And so, but for this year, this is sort of where we're at. Overrides don't start in May. They start in, you know, October because people don't like the cuts that were made the previous year. And so stay vigilant and go from there. But I'm happy to hear comments. So for the public hearing, please, everybody just identify yourself, your name, your address for, for any comments you'd like to make. And we'll just pass the two microphones around just so that we can be heard on NOR Cam. I know we have some people online as well. I'm going to start in the room quickly and then we'll go to the, go to the online as well. So anybody in the room, raise your hand if you'd like to be heard. Yes, right here. Want to pass the microphone back? Again, name and address and.
My name is Mia Ladoo. I live at thirty five Hable Street.
My name is Ella Blanch. I live on Heritage Way.
Keep passing it.
No, just, just give your comments.
All right. So, um, we wanted to do a small presentation on the foreign language program at the middle school. And the points we'd like to make about this. What the benefits are of learning a foreign language, the impact that this is, the cuts are going to have on the current and the future students going into these programs. The high school and college opportunities, the teacher and staff impact, and the other options that we can make. So I also would like to say that, um, we have all of your emails and we're going to send this slideshow out to you. That way, because we have a bunch of like videos and sources, that way we're not doing it now and you can look at it later.
Wonderful.
So some of the benefits of learning a foreign language is you can improve your memory, problem solving skills, and multitasking abilities. It's also been linked to delaying dementia Alzheimer's up to five years. And it boosts the, the brain's gray matter, which means that like, that stuff controls your memories, your movement and emotions. So it can really help a lot of different things. Secondly, we would like to talk about the impact it has on the students.
So we've noticed that the removal of foreign language as an option for middle school students of the future will have a huge impact on these students. They will never get to experience learning a foreign language before high school, like students before them got the opportunity to do. In addition to not learning the language, these students will not have the opportunity to learn from the incredible N R M S foreign language staff that have positively affected so many middle school students in the past.
So the future French students, which currently those would be the seventh and sixth graders right now in middle school, they, as far as we know, they would not have, they would have to take something else, or they just would not have a language when they become in like seventh or eighth grade later on. And we just think that like, that can have an impact on like, a lot of different things for them, especially in high school. If they go and they have to switch to Spanish, that can like be a lower GPA. Like I know a lot of my friends personally, we're going to try to take all honors classes and all of us have never taken a Spanish lesson before, so we would not be able to do that. And that can later on go and affect colleges because they can see we didn't take all honors classes. And even if we don't, we might not do the best in those Spanish classes since we've never taken them before.
So there are academic impacts because the removal of foreign language as a middle school class could possibly have severe academic impacts on future students not getting a head start on learning language. Put those students at a disadvantage, as Mia was saying, and could cause them to have much harder time in future classes.
And then again, talking about high school and college, I know that to graduate, you need two years at least of the same language. But sometimes colleges require you to have three years of that. And you can, so it doesn't mean you can't get into college, but you would have to take it in college. And so if like, say, French four was not offered, or French three, like these students would have to go and take that in college.
As well as academic impacts, there's also emotional impacts. And as eighth grade students, we are lucky enough to experience incredible language teachers of N R M S. Many student, many students rely on those teachers as a support system. And the thought that future students may not be able to experience these teachers is very sad.
At the North End Middle School, there's currently four, um, language, like world language teachers. I believe only three of them teach French and Spanish. So if we did cut some of them, I think it would be good because like, not that it's good to cut people, but they still can teach both languages. So there's not really like a reason to cut out one of the languages or both of them.
So for other options, as students who have been learning French for over two years, we have not only learned more about the language, but we've also learned a lot about the culture and the people as well. Some other options that our eighth grade French class has brainstormed are, the French students can have a fundraiser, a bake sale, trivia night auction. And all funds would go towards retaining a French class for the middle and high school. The other option is that French should still be class, after those wanting to take it, but they would have to pay for it, like an after school club. And our French class is open to hearing other ideas on how to continue our learning and is willing to participate in helping with those ideas.
So for like an overall conclusion, taking French out of the curriculum isn't about just losing a class. It's about taking away opportunities for the, the students. Many of us have already spent years of learning French and switching to a different language in high school would make it harder for them to graduate. Since they do that. French is also important for college careers and understanding different cultures. Instead of limiting choices, we should work to keep them. Keeping French in our school gives students more opportunities to learn and succeed. Thank you for taking your time to listen to our argument. We hope you truly take it to consideration.
Excellent job. First of all, I, I very much appreciate you coming. I like hearing from students. I have two middle schoolers that I've been hearing from since they heard about these cuts as well. So I can't hit a gavel against them and have them shut up. They just keep going at me about it. But really do appreciate you coming and speaking to this. So you guys are both in the eighth grade right now?
Yes, we both take French.
Okay. So I want to make sure we clarify right now what we're talking about as well. And so, and, and kind of explain also sort of where, because there's two different aspects to this right now. The middle school program is one thing because we sort of mentioned it was one of the last programs that came in. And so that's really the big focus of it. And then the French, a lot of that was based on enrollment in, in the high school. And so if I recall, when we were having our budget workshop, it was said that like, is that the high school, there's a total of forty three students?
Fifty three, forty seven for next year.
Forty seven students. And so that's where I think a lot of that came from. But, but the hope is that people can continue through. So Dr. Daly, do you want to speak a little bit?
So again, wonderful job. We love hearing from you. A lot of the ideas that you have are great. We're going to take them into consideration. A lot of those ideas we've had as a team and I've worked with Dr. O'Connell and Mr. Colleen and Mr. LePret. We have our, you know, and I'll speak for myself and, and I, I think I speak for everyone. We believe in world languages. We believe in starting as early as possible. I know that in order to learn a foreign language, starting as early as kindergarten is key, right? We talk about that here all the time. That's why we expanded to grade six from just being in grade eight. We have the global child program at the elementary school. We've had that at the middle school program. We absolutely will have that as an opportunity for folks at the middle school to continue learning French, to continue learning multiple languages. They offer more languages through that program than we have here. So for some of those cognitive functions and pieces, that will certainly be in place. It does come down to a, a numbers game. Students who are currently in French in eighth grade, who would be taking French two, so they've, they've taken the, the French one course in eighth grade and they're eligible for French two based upon the teacher recommendations and other slides, would be able to support that into the high school. Students that would move into French one would be, would be taking Spanish one. That's five students to my understanding. So we're talking about five students that would have to switch from French to Spanish. In grades six and seven, similarly, there's not going to be an option with one teacher to have both French and Spanish. And it would be a different kind of program where you still would be learning French, Spanish cultures. There would be other pieces that you'd be exploring. It would be similar to what we did before the change in seventh grade with exploratory. So obviously we would modify that curriculum for the students going into seventh grade. If already had a half year in sixth grade and those going into eighth, you've already had a half year in sixth and a half year in seventh. But then that would slowly phase to something different as new students come up through the, through the schools. Cutting electives and looking at numbers, this is what we talked about in that slide Mr. Connolly had up there. Part of what makes North End Public Schools wonderful and a great place to work and a great place to attend are all the opportunities we offer. Even those opportunities that we fight for, for some kids, that niche is what gets you up and gets you to school every day, right? Whether it's the arts, whether it's world languages, whether it's robotics. But some of those smaller classes with five, ten, fifteen students in them, that's what's going to have to be cut if we have to make cuts due to the numbers. And that's just the reality of it. And that's why we're saying, you know, it's not, the, the class size is not simply a, how many teachers do we have? How many students do we have? It's not just a math problem. It's also a, special needs classes need to be smaller. And some of our core programs, when we're trying to build them and when they're serving a specific need, they're smaller, right? And that's what you're going to start seeing unfortunately on these lists if we have to keep cutting a million dollars every year. But I really appreciate what you brought forward. We're going to continue to work with you and we, we believe in world languages. And, and my, my hope is to be here talking next year about bringing this back and bringing it back strong.
Yeah, I think it's absurd that we're only going to have one language offered. I mean, I went to school in upstate New York and we had Spanish, French, and Latin. For some reason I took Latin and can't speak it at all, but, but I think it's ridiculous. But I, I appreciate knowing that like, so the eighth graders, I think the idea of six and seventh is so that in eighth grade you can, can basically take French one. So do they get, it's good at least that you would be able to keep going in the ninth grade with it, so you don't have to start again. But, um, yeah, I mean, the more fundamental issue, yeah.
I do have one question about this. If like some of those kids were, like they signed up to take French two in freshman year, would they be able to take French three? Their sophomore year?
You, you'll be able to continue on throughout. So if you're taking, so if, the idea here is that there's not enough interest for a French one program. And so the idea is like, if, if in eighth grade you took the French, essentially did well in a French one class and were going on to French two, you would be, we're making the commitment that you'd be able to continue the, throughout the rest of your high school career to get, you know, hopefully the seal of literacy and, or by literacy and, and keep going. So that's what we're trying to preserve here is that it would just be going forward. Instead of splitting ninth graders into two different subjects and then splitting them further, just some of those classes are just so, again, if the whole school had fifty three in four grades, some of those classes are just really, really small right now. And so that's where we have to look at, where are we making cuts? That's where there just isn't enough interest right now. And so, but yes, but the eighth graders who are going to be starting with French two would be able to continue through, through senior year.
If I could just clarify what that means. I don't know, Ms. LePret, did you want to share what we're able to guarantee for the incoming freshmen?
What we would communicate to eighth graders going into the high school, we know we have an obligation to meet, to allow you to meet our requirement around a language. So we would say, you're, you're definitely going to get the two years. I wouldn't guarantee beyond the two years. I think we would have to look and see, what is the, again, what's the enrollment, where's the enrollment going? We, we, you know, to have a, a burgeoning world language department, which we had, you know, we had electives and things like that. We've kind of trimmed those down again, around, around staffing issues and, and concerns for budget things. So I would struggle to say, if we only have as though, as that French, you know, students matriculate through to say, we're only going to have three that want to take AP French and two that want to take, you know, French five. That those are definitely going to be there. I, I would not want to guarantee that. So definitely your two years, but beyond that, I think it's, I wouldn't guarantee it unfortunately.
And that's similar to any other electives that we look at. If the enrollment's that low, it's not always something we can run, just do the staff.
Excellent job ladies.
And yeah, and we'll still have further discussions on anything else that's being cut and, yeah. Okay, next.
Thank you. Excellent job. I'm Sarah McAldrick. I live on John Vicford Way. I just, I want to echo what's been said about the tremendous amount of work and appreciation. But if I could offer some comments, I've spent a lot of time thinking about why the override failed last year, too much time. And I think it's either people don't know or they don't get it. And when I look at this presentation, I listen to everything that you're saying, I hear about all the cuts. I see all the things that are going to be trimmed and reduced and impacted and sacrificed. And then I read the conclusion page and it has the word maintain five or six times. But we're not really maintaining, right? So I, I, I think it's very important, and I know there are limitations to the extent you can. And given the parameters for what the school committee can do, what the schools can do, what the administrators can do, to really inform people, beat them over the head with, this is not maintaining. We're just cutting and cutting and cutting until we get to a point where the sacrifice is too great. And the question is, when are we at that point? But when we use language like maintaining, meeting, standards, people focus on that and they say, everything's fine. We're maintaining, we're meeting, but we're not. So I just think the messaging that we're offering has to be very direct.
I would agree, by the way. Thank you. And kudos to the two young ladies that spoke. My name's Kyle Sartanovich. I'm at one oh seven Chestnut Street. This is my wife Anna. We're here actually speaking for my son who's, was diagnosed with autism at age two and is an incredible benefactor of the RISE program at the Hood School. So thank you to all of his teachers in Paris. It's incredible what they're doing there and we're very much appreciative. The initial letter that came out about this meeting seemed a bit ambiguous specifically around the special needs program. And we had an email out to, to you, Dr. Daly, and I think that's part of the reason here. Obviously there's direct implied reductions in some of those education departments. But even the language today is still, we're still reshaping the special needs program, which I'm in sales. So I don't know if that's intentional or if it's uncertain. But you know, our, our primary concern is that our son has access to, you know, the incredible education that he's had and continues with that. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, but could you maybe elaborate in more details which might spur additional questions?
I'm going to ask Ms. Conant to speak to it, but I would just say, you know, when we communicate out, is certain information becomes identifiable. And so we always want to meet with staff so that they're not thinking like, does this impact me? Does this not impact me? I would never want someone to find out if something was discussed in public and they're having second thoughts. So we're not at a place to identify individuals. And so we're keep, so that's why certain things are kept at that, at that level. But Ms. Conant could probably speak to, to it a little more detail.
Do you have anything to add? Do you have anything to add?
I guess, is there any more information on the positions that will be cut from the elementary program and how that affects the sub separate program and like ratios?
I think it clarifies, but I think as we're learning through this as a first time parent, the advantage of an IEP is that it's legally binding and dismisses all of the potential ambiguous questions. So when you receive ambiguous questions, an IEP essentially tells you, let's get this in writing so we have an exact understanding. So I think that our questions are almost coming from the same idea. And we do have an understanding that, you know, what you guys are sharing with us and elaborating on, that there won't be reduction in service, but quality of services, particularly for this population of students, is equally or more important because they all have, you know, different ways that they approach learning. And as I'm sure you and many of your colleagues know, so. So that was certainly our, you know, goal of understanding more today.
Yes, as Kyle mentioned, we've been really happy with the services our son has received the past few years. But it does make me nervous to see cuts in that area because of course he does need a certain level of care and we would like it to be here in the community. But I worry like that would push him out of district at some point if the program is getting smaller. Okay, yeah, thank you for that clarification.
And and just to kind of give a little bit more clarity on the the calendar of this. So here's the challenge that we're all facing. We won't actually know the state budget probably until after town meeting actually happens. We are going to have to get preliminary numbers that we're working on to have a vote on April 28th for what we're voting for to bring to town meeting. Dr. Daly has to give information to teachers or to staff as soon as May 1st under the terms of their contract. And so.
For professionals.
Yeah, for professional status teachers by then and some are a little bit later than that. And so we don't, we don't know yet, like the new growth number. We don't know yet if if we're going to vote to go to a different insurance company. And so all of those things, like you don't want to, you don't want to tell a bunch of people that they might be cut and then have them leave the district. Because if we don't have to, like, we're doing everything we can to try to work together to try to find more revenue so that we don't have to make further than this in in terms of cuts. So a lot of, there are a lot of moving parts that are still going on. I mean, we end up, toward the end of April, like, I mean, there's, there's been years where like literally every single day I'm in two hour meetings for finance planning team. Like, I remember this a couple of years ago, like for like 10 days straight. Like every single morning, it was like a two hour, two and a half hour meeting, talking about revenue and cuts and things like that. So there's still a lot of moving parts and that's the problem. We don't want to identify so that somebody leaves the district because I think they're being cut if we can actually get the revenue to keep that position. So you will have noticed a lot sooner because teachers are going to have to be given notice at some point in time. We will vote on actual budget on April 28th. We will vote a budget at town meeting in early June. And then everything will be final for, more final for the next year. Yeah, and 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 even to the comment on, you know, maintaining like, also remember like we can speak very freely here. The problem is no one's ever here. And and the challenge is we can't jump into these community connection arguments on things. We were trying to do a social media account and Mr. Sutherland and Miss Leen does have done a great job, you know, getting that running so we can get information out. But we can't start debating people on there because there's open meeting law issues. And so, you know, I think a lot of people are open to having conversations, but we need other people. We need community members that take up that fight and and push out information. And even if you have questions, you want to reach out to us individually, ask, great. But like, it's hard for us to jump into those pages and try to push information out because of the open meeting law. Okay, yeah, I know there's some online.
Just quickly, and I really appreciate those comments. And I'll just say as well, part of, part of the problem is that we, we've made it work, right? So Michael and I have been doing this for 15 years. I've been, you know, a little more than five years as super, but I was as assistant super doing this work. We'd get this budget, we'd have to make cuts, we figured things out. We didn't go for the shock and awe kind of things. We don't, we didn't throw anything out there. We were, we were honest, we cut where we needed to cut. When there were reductions, we reduced. When there were increases in enrollment, we increased. And we figured out a way to make it work for so many years. And with no new growth coming into town, we started to realize a few years ago, we can't keep doing this every year. That's part of what we really tried to get the message out last year. I spent a lot of time last spring going and doing meetings and having sessions and some were attended, some weren't. And I've spent this fall trying to defend whether we actually made the cuts we actually made. So people don't believe that it happened. We need to hear not just from me at every meeting talking about it. We've had some teachers come, we've had some parents having the students here. Again, it's hearing those direct impacts is huge. Hearing, hearing the cuts here and and I, if if anyone could have a takeaway from tonight, it's this year and then also next year. Because that's where my real concerns are. There's no way we're not going back to that list Michael had up and looking at those other areas. It's just there's nowhere else to cut. And people need to understand that. Again, that we're doing the best we can, but this is what's happening. So I appreciate your point.
If you, if you want to get to worst case scenarios, I mean, last year was, it was a few positions. This year it's programs, you know, it's newer programs. Next year, where are we going? You know, I mean, there's, if you're, if you're in a class with less than 10 kids in it, be concerned, you know? I mean, those are certain electives, those are certain positions, you know? I mean, push it all the way out. I mean, people ask about like things like redistricting. You know, if you end up cutting classes, if you end up having, you know, okay, we're going to have 28 kids in a third grade in the batch, but only 20 kids at the little, that's not fair, you know? So then you have to think about, can you redistrict where, you know, people are going to, so you're evening it out so everybody has 25 kids in a class. But you can't just do that across three school districts. And so, not saying we're doing that yet, but if you continue to cut, look around at neighboring towns, they're closing schools. They're closing schools to get students so they can divide them up into bigger classes and fewer, you know, and fewer buildings as opposed to anything else. Like, we're not there yet, but we're not that far away.
So since we're on this topic and you brought up social media, so now we're all in. So I, and I won't speak for Jen, but you know, one of the the big reasons why I ran and wanted to be on school committee this year was to start to get that information out into the community. You know, as Dr. Daly indicated, there's a lot of misinformation out there. So I think one takeaway from everybody that's online and in the room, you've recently seen the school committee go online. This is a big step for us. If you look across the state, there is not a lot of school committees that are make, that have a social media presence whatsoever. So the goal that we have, you know, Jennifer and I are working together on getting the message out. Please use that, get our, we're going to be getting the facts out to the community. And then we're going to be relying on the community to get those facts out to other people. So if you're not following these new accounts, I'll give, do another shameless plug at NRPS SC. Jennifer and I will be out throughout the spring. That's one of our goals that we've taken on, to go get out into the community and provide that fact based evidence. We are happy if people want to get people in their neighborhoods to come to within your neighborhood and sit in somebody's living room and talk about these facts. We're happy to go meet at the library meeting room, wherever we can go to get the facts out there. But then I think to Mr. Buckley's point, there's a line that we can come and we can talk about what we in the schools are doing and what the facts are. And then we need people in the community to really take that message and drive it forward. So anybody online, anybody in the room, you know, help, that's where you can help us as we try to deliver this message to more people. So people are aware as to what this budget is and where it is going. Because I think next year we'll be having this exact same discussion.
Yeah, and I, and I think Dr. Daly, we talking about you defending the cuts all fall that people are saying, were they actually made? We know there's been questions. Wait, I thought the override passed because it passed a town meeting, but not in the ballot box. There's a lot of confusion if you're not paying attention. And Ms. McGoldrick, your point is well taken about the the language we use. And hopefully when Tim and I are going out and talking to groups and things like that, we can make it, make it clear what's happening. And, you know, even though Michael's had that slide for a couple of years, reiterate to people what what is, what is coming for us.
Just to keep, we go in.
I just want to, again, Tim and Jen have done a great job with the social media. It's, that's how people are are interacting with information now. Seeing things on social media is really important and this is education, but it's not, it's not action. So if people get into lengthy Facebook discussions, these seats are empty every other week and people need to show up. They, if you, the battle on Facebook is pointless, no one's seeing it. I'm not seeing it because I purposely avoid it because it's, well, anyways. It's toxic, ah, shaman. But you need action, you need to show up at the meetings or you write, you, you write not just to us, you write to the select board, you make it known. These are the same, the faces here I see almost every time. I don't see a lot of new faces. And so when like Dr. Daly and Scott say there's no appetite, it's because we're not seeing it. And we shouldn't have to look at the outrage page on Facebook to see the appetite for, for an override. That's all I'm going to say about that.
Another more comments here, but there's some lining up online too. So I'm going to go to online for a minute. Heidi Candelari, you're cushioning. Do you want to unmute and? Tracy Cost?
Oh, sorry, no, it's John.
Oh, John, okay.
Hi, everybody, John Cost, Stephanie O'Neal Road. I've got four students split between the junior high and high school now. But we've actually attended every school in town through a couple of moves that we've made. We just have one question. Are there any support plans that are in place or being discussed for families that can't afford the new higher fees if they do become implemented?
Yeah, so I'm happy to address it in a couple of different ways. Last year, we did pass a, for the first time, a universal fee cap. So that if you, you know, have students that are doing sport, athletics and, you know, performing arts, like a lot of times there's a, there's a cap on each individual fee. But you might have, you know, two or three different categories of fees. And we saw that where people are paying more than, you know, more than $2,000 on those. So we did put a universal cap in place. So that will still stay. So there will be, you know, the fees will be going up, but there will be a universal fee cap. And then just, you know, for families that are in need, even though there's universal free lunches right now, there is still, you know, application for people that are struggling to be able to reach out for, I think it's a free and reduced lunch application. Fill that out and some students, you know, they qualify, they would not have user fees assessed at all.
All right, so just to be clear, the, the user fee cap is for all fees? Or it, I guess I, I have, I have children that do both athletics and other things. And I was under the impression that those were separate and not combined into one family cap.
There are, there are different family caps for each fee, but then there's a universal family fee cap. This year it was $1,800. So it might have to go up a little bit for next year. But if you, if you together, so once you get to the spring and you're paying, you know, if you've, if you've paid more than $1,800, there'll be an application. Mr. Connelly can maybe tell us how to get it. But you could, you would submit and say, oh, we paid, you know, $2,400 and you would get $600 back from that. So the universal fee cap, the only thing that does not go into that is the kindergarten fee and the preschool fees. But everything, user fees, performing art fees, athletic fees, all go towards that universal fee cap.
And that's all schools, all fees, one family cap?
Correct, correct.
Just to clarify?
Yes, bus, performing arts, athletics, activity fees, all of them go towards it. So it wouldn't be more than $1,800.
Right.
And Mr. Connelly, can you talk about how to?
Yes, so the application is on the district website. Under, it's on the business office website, on the relevant forums. And I think it's also on the family, in the family resources website on the district page as well. So it's a fillable PDF form. You can just complete it and send it to the business office and the information that's on the form. But it is correct. So it's, it's every sort of district related fee. So some of the confusion I did get last year from some families, if they may have paid kind of a youth sport that's out there, like a youth lacrosse or a youth soccer or something to that effect, that is not really eligible. It's sort of what the school committee has voted for these fees that we just talked about this evening.
All right, that clarifies it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Were you waiting up there, Bert?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I just, to piggyback on the, oh, sorry, Katie Scott at Lindor Road. Just to piggyback on Sarah and the engaging people on the social media. Appreciate the social media. And I understand it's toxic and whatever, and I will keyboard warrior for the school like all along. But that is how people are getting news. And like, I understand it's frustrating for you guys, but right now we're talking about voting on a budget that's going to happen at the end of this month. Like, shouldn't, this sort of stuff needs to be pushed out to people way earlier? Like, you can predict, right, for '26, '27? I mean, yeah, it might be, you know, something wild. But like, what you have, what we have cut as a town is following that. And like, what is next year going to look like? Is performing arts program going to go away? Like, maybe shock and awe of the community, like, maybe that's what's needed? Because people are not angry. They're not angry at all. They're like wringing their hands, like, oh, no, what do we do? And then that's it. And nobody comes to these meetings, nobody comes to the town meeting, nobody votes. Like, what do you do? Yeah, like, I think scare tactics may be the next move? I don't know.
I, I appreciate it. I mean, ju- just to kind of further elaborate on the challenges we have in in social media is the open meeting law says that if a quorum, meaning three of us, participate in any discussion that's related to something that we're voting on. So the budget is absolutely something we're voting on. So if three of us like the post, are, you know, there's an argument that we have violated open meeting law.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying, like, I'm saying stuff and I don't have the information. Like, I'm just kind of speaking out of my, you know, just, that's wrong. We're not, we're not teaching CRT to the students, like, you know, like.
So we will try to push information out. And if you have questions specifically, I mean, there's people in this room that reached out to me last year during override time and said, what's the facts on this or whatever? Reach out to us, you know, our emails, you can get my email, get my phone number, whatever. Like, I mean, I'll be able to give you the information to do it. I do sometimes tell people, don't jump in, but I'm going to jump in and fight a couple of these things. But I can't sometimes not take the bait. But yeah, again, and, but the challenge is the timing of everything, you know? Like, we, we don't have revenue numbers from the state. We get them so late to see what the revenue is going to be. And so all of these things are done so early or so late in the process that it's impossible to know. Like, we have an idea of what our expenses will be next year, but we don't have an idea what the revenues will be next year. And so it's hard to know what the cuts are going to need to be. We're trying to kind of identify in some vague ways the things that are on there. I mean, anything that is not required. I mean, anything that's not required, I mean, it could be saying we're not busing students after sixth grade. You know, I mean, that could be something that some districts have done, you know? It could be saying that we're not going to have after school, you know, activities. But again, it's, there's a lot of things, but it's just, what is it going to be? We can't just say these are all the 17 different things we could cut. But we try to identify as best we can upfront. But right now, it's like, you know, it's this year that we're focused on right now. And just saying that overall fundamentally, there's a gap where if there's no override for next year, we're going to be back here again trying to find another, you know, 12 positions to cut. Mr. Clean?
And also, like, they've done a great job. Hopefully, next year, you'll be able to say, I was able to share more factual information from where you sit because it's been an effort, a huge effort on the part of Tim and Jen to get it out there. I mean, it's unfortunate, it's just getting off the ground now, but. But the hope is that we'll be able to share some of these slides as a graphic on Facebook. So you can directly share that. And maybe that slide that has the bulleted list of like, this is what's on the chopping block, that can be shared and we can link back to, uh, Mr. Connolly's full slideshow. So people can go and within a few clicks, get information. That's the hope. So I say, education is great on social media. It's just, we can't, we, we don't see the feedback.
Yeah, and when Tim says it's rare to have the school committee page, he's been trying to do this since the first day he got elected last May. So it's, it's taken a while, but yes, now we hope to use this time and be, be more prepared.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, so, uh, could you go back to the budget presentation, go to slide, uh, seven, I believe? One thing that you're going to see impact, and this is not just going to be us, it's going to be across, you saw it this year. Biggest, the biggest driver is contractual salaries and it's 4.5%. We're capped to 2.5%, math doesn't work. Wait until the, these bud, these, uh, negotiations start coming up again. It, and again, it's not just us, you saw how many strikes last year. This is, this is going to be a reality of all of these towns that are doing negotiations. The, the educators are very fairly asking for increases. We all know that educators are vastly underpaid. This is the problem, right there. It's 4.5% going up to 5%, deservedly so. But in a world where we are capped to 2.5, and that is what, 82% of the budget? The math can't work unless you just keep cutting and cutting and cutting to offset that. And again, deservedly so for, for increases. But you just, square peg, ground hole, you can't make it work. So.
I see your hand up, he has a mic, I'm just going to have Mr. Simons go and then we'll pass the mic over there. Go. Why don't you go there first, okay? There we go. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi, Christy Sarno from Old Coach Road. I have two high schoolers at the moment, but they've been in the system since kindergarten. Um, and I'm just, I, I think I'm getting confused now between the conversation over future budgets and this year's budget. So the way I understood what you explained is that we're going to vote in April to approve potentially the list of cuts that you had up there.
April 28th, the school committee will vote.
So we'll vote on this.
What gets put, what get, what gets put forth to town meeting? At town meeting, the entire town will vote on a combined budget, municipal and school.
And that's just a number that we're voting on?
That's a number.
Okay, so like, let's say for example, the, the 432 gap, you said there was actually a chance that we come in like 100,000 over that in some scenarios with grants and things that you don't know yet.
Right.
So if that were to happen after the budget is voted on, is one of these things not cut? And do you already know which one of those things that is? And do you stick to this list? Cause then I heard some people saying, well, there's a whole thing that could be on the chopping block. So that's why I'm confused. Is it this list that you're working off of after the budget is passed? Or, or is it just, you just reassess the whole thing when you know the final numbers?
So before April 28th, we will know what the number is. So we have to vote on something on, around April 28th, like before June town meeting, we have to have a number that we vote on. And so if we find out that the new growth gives the schools 300,000 and we find out that, that the unions vote to go to the new, you know, health insurance and all these numbers are finalized, and we find out that with that, maybe we don't have to cut, you know, a million, maybe we have to cut 850,000. We would then be bringing back and saying, okay, we're obviously not going to cut, we don't have to cut. And so we'll be saying, that's why we'll probably have another budget workshop slightly before the April 28th meeting to talk about what those would be. But yes, and, and maybe Dr. Daly can talk a lot, I don't know, if you want to talk a little bit about the priority of that? But we will have that number there. Um, that will be the number that goes towards June town meeting. Now there could be amendments made on the floor of June town meeting. So there could be somebody who goes in and says, an amendment to take $500,000 out of the school budget line item and put it towards roads, you know? And if they vote that, we get $500,000 less. And at that point in time, there's not a lot that we can cut without, I mean, teachers all would have had to have notice already. And then we're talking about really bad things if that happens. But, but yeah, but that's what's going to happen there. We're just talking about how to close that gap. We don't know exactly what that gap is. Or, or you say, this is the gap. A part of the solution is new growth, a part of the solution is a change from health insurance from Blue Cross Blue Shield to another provider. And then the rest of that are user fees and cuts. Okay, and Dr. Daly, do you want to talk a little bit?
Just to address a couple of things. So our, our process begins in November. We start getting some preliminary numbers. We come up with our budget, what we'd like to see. We typically go into this, this meeting, we usually have three columns. It's usually level services and then modified of our vision for the future and then our full vision for the future. We didn't even have those other two columns this year. We're not even, Michael had one slide talking about what we hope to be doing moving forward. Cause we've known for quite some time, we actually, when we presented last year, we thought we were going to have twice this amount as a deficit this year, um, going in, which is part of, that was a huge reason why we had, um, the override vote last year. So we're actually on pace, I know it seems late, but we have a very late town meeting. So we start, this is the beginning of the process to publicly get people involved through the public hearing, through the budget vote. And then there's still time between then and town meeting, um, to continue to talk about this and to, and to advocate. Our, our team, our administrative team makes suggestions when we get these numbers and we start thinking about cuts, um, they come up with things that, um, none of these are acceptable, but they try to figure out what would have the least amount of impact on staff and the students. And so we make these recommendations, we try to come up with a recommended priority order and a priority restore order. Ultimately, it's the school committee's decision to decide where those cuts are made and what order it is. So I always respectfully ask that they consider the, the hard work that the, the, uh, teachers and administrators have put into this process, um, in each school. And so typically we always try to prioritize positions and restoration for a few reasons. One, um, all of our educators are excellent, we highly value them. Um, two, there are other costs associated with, uh, layoffs that include, you know, unemployment costs and other pieces. So, you know, we think that there are, there are financial reasons and obviously educational reasons to try to prioritize positions. Um, so we will have that restore order that would come back in. Um, we also, when we do that, when we look at them, everyone argues for their positions, we try to look at the overall student enrollment. Right now there's, there are, the enrollments at the high school and the middle school are down. That's why we saw this year and last year, more cuts at that level. Prior years we'd seen more cuts at the elementary schools. So that's just sort of a big picture of where we would go with restorations.
And the, the only other very quick comment on just procedure, if you've ever been to town meeting, you'll see the municipal budget is very different than the school budget. The school budget is one line item. So you see, Mr. Connolly has gone out and said exactly where every penny is going to be spent within the budget. But if we ever needed to, money could be moved from line to line without going to town meeting for that. Okay? And sometimes they do that, but I think the reason we stay on budget is because we do down to the penny on what's going to be spent where. So we try to stick to that, but theoretically, if we need to, if there's a move in student, like we can move funds around if we need to. We try not to do that, but we can if, if needed. The municipal side's very different. There's all sorts of different departments and every line item, you have to go to town meeting to move money from this line item to that line item. So it does operate slightly differently. But even though it's not a requirement, we do try to do a line by line, um, itemization. So everybody knows exactly what the plan is for that coming year. Okay, thank you. Mr. Simons, do you want to pass it back? And I know there's more people online, we'll get to online again in a moment.
Jeff Simons, 31 Hickory Lane. Um, Noel, I'm one of the old faces that's been here for 33 years and counting.
Good to see you.
And, um, going back 33 years, when we started advocating for school budgets and school buildings, um, we were working with, uh, selectmen that I think it's fair to say were, were very adversarial. You know, majority of the selectman board back in the day, and it was really, really hard. Um, you know, things were much more contentious at town meeting. We've been very fortunate the last few years to have a lot of agreement, that the finance team kind of getting all these things hashed out ahead of time, doing a lot of the hard work behind the scenes. But Scott, you made a, a point, and I just want to make sure people are clear about this. This problem's not going to go away anytime soon, and I don't see any way to get around it, but an override. And it, it needs to come back, and, and we need to get that out in front of the people. The process, as you, you, you alluded to, and I think it bears repeating, is we don't even get a chance for an override vote unless the selectman put it on the warrant. It's not the school committee deciding that we need to have an override vote. The selectmen have to put it on the warrant. And we have a town election coming up. And my fear is we're going to get back to the bad old days when we had a majority of the selectmen that were very hostile to school budgets, school building projects and all that sort of thing. And I think people really need to understand when they go to vote for a selectman this spring, that if you're, if you agree with me and you think that the only way out of this problem is to have another override vote and to get people to really understand what's happening here and get behind it, we need to have a board of selectmen that's willing to put it out in front of the town. So bear that in mind as you go to the polls. It's, it's, it's not just voting for selectmen. If you're a school budget, school building supporter, then that becomes a very, very important item for you to vote on come, come spring. Uh, so I'm glad you brought that up. And I don't think people quite thought, not a lot of people understand, that's how this, how the, the process works. Um, uh, Cynthia, thank you for your comments. That one that jumped out at me, of course, is special education. But I'm, I'd be curious too to hear from, um, some of the principals that are here tonight, since you're here, especially Kathy, since it's, looks like you're, you have the most personnel cuts and the biggest budget item cut. And I think, I think parents and I think people in town really appreciate hearing from teachers and administrators and the people that are really directly working with their kids on what the impact is going to be. What's the negative impact for having four fewer teachers at the middle school, $325,000 cut from, from your budget? Um, if, if you care to, and any of the other principals that are here, I'd really love to hear, um, from you about, uh, you know, how could, how can you, um, how can you explain what that impact would be to your students?
Mr. Mullany, can you grab that mic? No, keep that one here, Jeff, keep that one here. Not to put you on the spot, but if you're okay.
Well, I, I don't, I'm not sure that everyone knows, this is my 14th year here as principal and I do not recall a, a budget quite this devastating to, at the middle school level. Um, our enrollment is down. Our, um, it's the lowest it's been in 14 years. It's trending up, but it's currently, it's low. We're under 500 this year, we'll be back over 500 next year. As, as Dr. Daly said, you know, when tasked with this really, really overwhelming, um, you know, uh, action, we looked at what, what is the most recent, um, thing that we've added? And the most recent programming was the world language and computer science. It's unfortunate, what would the impact be? It's, it's programming, it's, it's, um, experiences that children, it, we will still provide experiences in those two areas, but they will be reduced and limited. So we will still offer computer science and, and world language in an exploratory manner. It just won't be as robust as it has been. And we hope that this is temporary and that we would, you know, be looking to rebuild in future years. But the, you know, the impact is, is on the, is on the day to day experiences of the children. And, um, you know, it's, it's where we are. And we also had cuts last year and I did the best I could, well, the team, everyone, did the best we could to make those cuts with the least amount of impact on students' experiences and staff. And I think we were able to do that. Uh, we, we feel the cuts, but, but this year it's not, that's not the case. I don't know if any other principals would like to speak?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, with respect to the high school, I, I would add the same, you know, the same general message of, um, you know, this, it's going to be limited. Um, we, when we talk about the, the curriculum at the high school, we talk about breadth and depth. We talk about, uh, an academic program that is going to challenge students and is going to engage students. And then we would look at and say, well, we're not going to run this class, we're not going to run that. Or that, that, we took that out of the program of study, couldn't do that anymore. It's a hard thing to say to, uh, students. And one of the things that I, you know, really, um, as the principal for, you know, in my 11th year, uh, is we've looked to find ways, uh, to avoid situations where a student is going to end up getting their diploma and walking away and saying, you know, some asking, answering the question of what, what was it like? And say, well, it was good, but I, I just didn't really get what I wanted. I didn't, it was close, but not, you know, wasn't, wasn't real, I didn't get what I wanted. So we've looked at finding ways to, uh, remove obstacles for students to get more, you know, engaged in courses that are a stretch for them. Uh, but to take courses out of the program of study and to really say, yeah, you're not going to get what you want. It's, uh, really unfortunate.
You're not shocking off, 40% of our principals are quitting over this.
I, I think to keep it very simply and, and factual, looking at next year, already knowing that I have a, a new third grade student starting and one, uh, fourth grader, there'll be a fourth grader next year coming in. My fourth grade with the reduction of one elementary teacher, um, at the badge, it'll be three classes of 26 in the fourth grade. And in third grade we'll have, uh, without any move-ins that I, I know of, in third grade we'll have two classes of 22 and one class of 24. So that, that just keeps it very simple and factual. So the class sizes are just going up and just all the things that come along with that. And I do have to say, just to speak to the kindergarten program, we moved some things around for that support, but really that lack of support in those kindergarten classrooms by the elimination of the paraprofessional, because we did increase to four full day classes at the batch. We have, we had two paraprofessionals supporting four classes. I was able to move some people around, but it's, you know, it's, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul. So we're taking from one to help another. So it's really been a stressor on those kindergarten classrooms. Um, so it's, it's been a lot. And very factual, three classes of 26 in fourth grade next year, two classes of 22 and one of 24 in third grade, and that doesn't count any move-ins.
So I was fortunate enough to lose a classroom last year and I'll likely be losing one this year as well. And for me, the thing that stands out the most is that you see a difference in the children and the way they come to school every day. There's an increase in our absenteeism, children that are trying to avoid school, who are overwhelmed being in a class of 25 and 26 kids when it's not a one size fits all classroom. You know, I, I often hear people of my age group saying, oh, back in the day, you know, I had 30 people, 30 kids in my class and we made it work. It's not the same. The expectations are higher, the needs are greater. And we keep hacking away at the classrooms and these kids that deserve the best education that we can give them. And we're doing a great disservice to this town because, you know, think about this town. Why do people move to this town? Do we have great shopping centers? Do we have a fantastic downtown area? No, they come to this town because of the schools and the low crime rate, which I attribute also to the schools, because you have low, lower crime when you have better educated kids. I live in this town. I don't have any children in the school system. I don't have any grandchildren yet in the school system. My two children, two of my adult children just bought houses in this town. They bought them because I have done nothing but rave about the education in this town. I've been proud to be a part of it for 21 years. And I know people don't understand the impact this is having on kids, or maybe they just don't care. But we owe it to the children in this town to do the best we can do for them. And the, the smallest little thing that we can do, probably the babyest step that we can do is to ensure low class sizes. Because the larger the classes, the higher the stress levels for the teachers. They're overburdened, they're anxiety, the kids are anxiety ridden, the teachers are anxiety ridden. We're going to end up losing quality teachers. We need to look at what's important in this town. And I, I mean, I, I might be biased because I've been so heavily involved, but we need, we need to do what's right for the kids.
So just going to go to online, one, one quick, Mrs. Costello is online. You're on mute? Are you still here? Okay, we're down. Pass it back up or one of you? Yeah, go ahead.
My first participation in one of these. So first of all, thank you for the incredible preparation. It makes it easier as a first-time attendee. And just kind of queuing off your comments, the sentiment in the room of this individuals that seem to care enough and be passionate to show up and, and fight for their cause. You know, and Mr. Sutherland's working on social media. What other outreaches do you have? I mean, as a room of educators, how are we educating people that aren't finding this information and don't understand the process and, and enrolling, you know, I don't know. We got to be driving the age limit down other than those eighth graders that were here earlier, but that is part of the problem, like meeting people where they are and getting them to be engaged. And does the town have allocated resources towards marketing campaigns or different outreach programs? I know 150 people, but if that gets to 3,000 people and they all voted for this, we still wouldn't pass the override. So, you know, I'm not trying to poo-poo that. I applaud the effort, but the reality of changing that tide, I don't think will be solved by social media.
I mean, I, I'll just say, sadly, what awakens people are bad things. Strikes or big cuts. You know, closing schools gets people out, you know, teachers striking gets people out. We're trying to avoid big shock-worthy things. Other than that, it's, I don't know. I mean, the, the thing is at town meeting, when there's not anything, you know, controversial happening, there might be 200 people total there. And so you need 100 votes to change, you know, the outcome there. And so it's just, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. We're trying, we hear social media, like try to get it out there. We're trying to do what we can there. Trying to put it out. Somebody at the finance planning team said the other day, well, people that don't have kids in school aren't seeing these things. So we're going to send some things to the town administrator, ask them to put it out to everybody. Cause it's about the whole town budget, you know, but the school cuts out to everybody in town, not just to the, you know, parents of school-aged children. And so trying to do that as well. Like Dr. Daly does a really good job of sending emails out to everybody in, in the district. He has a blog, if you follow it, where you can get that information. We put information in the transcript. We, yeah, try to share on the community connection sometimes, just at least the basic information of like meetings happening.
Yeah, certainly not intended to be critical.
I get it.
I guess, you know, what, what I would just add to that is I, I think if the, you know, average number of residents in North Reading were aware, the extent of which this, these dollars are tracked and the passion in which the people are speaking about them, I think you would have a natural higher level of engagement, maybe not enough to solve the, or the, solve the challenge. But it, it does seem, I, I don't know, I don't know if there's enough sort of offensive action, you know, I don't, I don't know. You know, I think most people think of a town meeting or a hearing, they're, they're not something that's really appealing to attend type of a thing. So that, that inherently-
Oh, they're, they're not appealing to attend. Dr. Daly?
I'll just say, part of the issue with the shock and awe kind of cuts is it gets people angry, but not necessarily in the right direction. They get, they get mad at me. They get mad at the team. Why are you cutting this instead of that? And then we say, yeah, we could do something else. And then we end up doing it and then it goes away. Didn't solve the problem. The problem is the revenue stream. Problem is the inflation costs, right? So we need to get people active around what the actual problem is and get people active out in the community. So when I do do my blackboard blasts, it goes to the newspaper. I don't know what people are getting there. Michael and I are both active on social media. Michael does more with his budget. He's sort of, not to put him on the spot, but he's sort of an exemplar for the state in terms of, he does a budget webinar that then gets shared out. So it's out there and, and we do them in little 15-minute pieces. We are sharing those on social. This will be shared more now by the school committee. We, we've always, you know, we've, we've used Twitter, X in the past. We're now going to be on multiple different forums. I mean, we can make TikToks if we have to. Whatever it is to get out to people to get their news, because I agree that people are getting their news in a different way now. The problem though, is people are getting misinformation. They're not getting the full story. And so what people need to do is click on this link and then watch. I mean, this is, this is a two-hour meeting right now. You're not going to get the right information from a screenshot. That's still the first step that might bring you in. But for people to really understand to solve the problem, they need to engage. You need to invest the time, even if it's a 15-minute video to fully understand it, because it's really simple to grapple with misinformation or getting angry at someone, or just let's make some cuts, or we're overspending, or they're too top-heavy, or they didn't really cut anything. You need to listen to the actual stories. And the most important thing that's going to get people out of these testimonials. We've had some teachers come, have the students tonight. We need to hear more people about the impact because that really resonates. So little clips of that, you know, we can talk about on social media is doing little, little videos, you know, that you can, that you can share. We shared out the, the full meeting, but we can try to do a little bit of some quick little clips from the meeting that, you know, it's, it's maybe only a minute long, but it tells a bigger story. And then maybe you get engaged to watch more. So I appreciate the challenge.
Yeah, Mike, last thing, and then I have to go anyway, because we have to take, get my parents off of the clock. But, you know, I, I think a big thing in a larger political environment today, you talk about how people consuming news, buzzwords like fake news and other things like that. A lot of the methods you're talking about are people where they have to go actively, you know, you have to follow an account or subscribe to an account or actively choose to engage with it. You have to pay for a newspaper subscription. But it's not necessarily potentially meeting people where they are. You know, I don't know if there's a great printing press company in, in North Reading, but you could start a transparency campaign that sends out trimester, one-page, high-gloss printed sheets that show annual income from revenue, how it's going by department and, and just direct mailers and put on the back a testimony, get to meet our students, who is valedictorian, who's the, you know, soccer captain that's, you know, getting to Harvard last year, why their education matters. But the more you meet people at their home in their mailbox, they have to physically throw it out. They have to opt in for a lot of the education or touchpoints that you have. And I would assume it's probably a low-cost campaign to potentially local business, so.
Yeah, no, I, I see what you're saying and I, I appreciate all those ideas and they're great. And I think there's some, some people in the room here who did, did try to do a lot of that for the override last year. And you said you're new to this. Just so you know, the, the override passed at town meeting by a pretty good margin. And then yet, two, two and a half weeks later, couldn't get people to go and vote on that day, even though there was a, a large effort around it. So I, I agree with you and, and it's extremely frustrating and those are all great ideas. And if you have any more, please continue to, to let us know, because it is a, it's a challenge.
And for the record, the town has an HR budget or PR budget, but it's being cut as part of the cuts.
I just want to add too, part of this has to be citizen-led as well. I mean, it's just, you know, there, there are limitations to what the school committee can do and especially come time of an override vote, whether it's a budget override or a building override, there are definitely restrictions on what, you know, what any public official can do. But it requires people to step it up, to step up. And that's been very disappointing the last few years. It's, it's, you know, Herculean effort for the override, but it was like a one-month lead time. It's nowhere near enough. I mean, so, you know, if we see this coming in next year or the year after, you have to start building, building that sort of, that network now. And that requires people to step up, come forward, say that they're pissed about this and they're willing to do something. So it can't be just the school committee either. So, you know, there has to be more, more people that are willing to step up and do their part too, to start to spread the word as well. And then formally, when it comes time to an override vote, to, you know, form committees and, and raise money and, and do mailers and, and all that kind of thing too.
Mr. Sutherland?
So while, while we're on this topic too, I know because we're all, we're all, you know, wrestling with social media, right? And, and from our perspective, that's the beginning of what we hope is our ability to start getting information out. So hopefully as I look across the room, although many of the faces are the same, if each of you can find two or three people and we can use that social media to get that information out, that's the, that route, you know, that Jeff is saying, that's how we're going to get that information out. So my ask would be, if you're upset, you're online, you're in the room, you know, as we start to put information out, find those two or three people and then tell them to find those two or three people, get that information out. So, you know, right now, you know, we boasted 48 hours, we got 100 whole followers on Facebook, right? There's like 9,500 people on the, the group Facebook page, right? We have a long way to go to get to the community. So that's one way we can do it. The other thing, just to make sure that everybody's, you know, clear on what we can and can't do as a board, we can post things that are presented here at school committee or that come from the district, right? Because again, open meeting law and, and in fairness to the community. So if there's things that you're hearing out there or that you think should be presented, then I would encourage you to reach out to one of the school committee members via email. We can try to insert it into an agenda. We can talk to Dr. Daly, Mr. Connolly about, about getting the information presented at school committee, so then we can get it out. Because there, there is that due diligence that we have to do to be fair and accurate for the entire community. So just so you're aware, we can't just say, we're going to go do this thing and cherry pick off of a slide, because then that puts really the whole school committee in jeopardy. But we're happy to take feedback. If like, hey, people are out there and they're saying this is happening, can you go get that fact for us so we can present it to the community? We are, I am more than happy to do that. We just need to know what it is.
Anybody online, Mr. Clean? Okay, Laura Bowers? Ms. Bowers online?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just, I just wanted to bring up the point that the override last year was for not just the schools. And I understand that some of those things passed under a debt exclusion, but that is a different impact on the tax on the two and a half. So I think that, that clumping all those things together really complicated the effort of trying to get these things passed for the school. And so I, I think remembering that those things, even though they passed later as a debt exclusion, complicated our efforts as a school system with these other things to us.
Correct.
If that makes-
Yes. Yeah, a good point. I mean, just for people that don't realize, I mean, the, the challenge we had last year is we saw over the next few years, I mean, from coming out of COVID, there was about 17 to 20% inflation over three years and revenue went up about seven and a half percent. And so there was a, there was a, a bunch of money. And then we saw with contracts that were coming up that we were going to fall behind. And so we said, do we want to try to do an override every year for multiple years? Or do we want to try to say, this is the three-year problem? And so we tried to put everything out there. This is the three-year problem. It didn't pass. So then it was like, okay, let's do it piece by piece. And so some of the big capital projects passed already. We haven't done it again for the, for the operating budget, but I think it's probably due soon. And so, yes, go ahead.
I am Brittany by 305 Cogswell Road. I am a teacher at the middle school, but I'm speaking as a parent. I have two students at the high school and one at the middle school. And I wasn't planning on coming, never mind speaking, until I had a conversation with one of my high schoolers this afternoon about her experience at the middle school. So all three of my children came to me five years ago through foster care and two of them started North Reading Public Schools in sixth grade. Their world language teacher in sixth grade had such an impact on them. And she today, hearing that those positions might get cut was very upset. She came here knowing nobody. She came from a very different school system. This was much faster pace. And that teacher, that sixth grade teacher took her in and supported her. And still, she still touches base with her, make sure she's doing well. And I know that maybe world languages need to be cut because that's placed on the budget. But if there is anything we can do to look at positions where they can maybe fill in, I think that if we lose these amazing teachers, it's going to be really devastating.
Completely agree with you. I have a feeling I know exactly who the teacher is too. Big impact. Yeah. And thank you for coming and speaking. Any other comments, thoughts online? And I'll just say, I appreciate the conversation and I hope, you know, we're not trying to be defensive here. We're trying to just explain what's happening and appreciate people do taking, taking the time to come out and have a conversation. I think that's what this needs to be, is a conversation. So any other thoughts? For us, I mean, I think for next steps, the key thing we need to do is we need to clarify the revenue. We need to figure out what we can get for, for growth, for new growth. We need to figure out if, if the union's willing to go to a different health insurance provider. I know there's meetings that are happening on that very soon and, you know, hopefully we can maybe even knock off a couple of these things. But if there's, I'll close the hearing if there's no other comments. Any other comments online, Mr. Clean, anybody? Okay. I thank everybody for coming. I closed the, the budget hearing at 9:16. And the only other thing we have is a discussion on user fees too. So I don't think, I don't know that we're going to vote much right now. We might vote a few, but just kind of rolling into, we did talk about the user fees. And Mr. Connolly had put up some of the proposed increases. Mr. Connolly, do you want to put them up again? Do you want to like lead us?
Yeah. So I mean, similar to what we discussed earlier in the evening, user fees has kind of become unfortunate reality here as we try to go through this process year in year and balance the budget. It's become instrumentally more challenging, monumentally more challenging with the inflation and with the scenario that we talked about with Mr. Sutherland, with the more and more of the reserve is just dwindling each year. So during our budget workshop, I believe we had discussed the column in the right as a potential increase. And we had talked about what additional revenue that would mean. And that was all partly leading to that $120,000 of additional revenue that was put off on the prior slide.
And, and just, just to jump in on, on two quick points here. Number one, some of these are needed. Some of these won't actually help the budget other than not further depleting the budget, because we're using reserve funds. And like I said before, every single reserve fund was depleted from where it was last year. And so a lot of this is just stopping it from getting further into the operating budget as opposed to necessarily putting money back into it.
Right. So I mean, if we take one, then one by one, I mean, the bus transportation, that unfortunate, and believe it or not, and we do an analysis on this every year, even though our rates are going up each year with our current contractor, North Suburban, who we are, next year would be the last and final year of that contract. Geographically, the rates that other districts are paying for the same services, just daily, you know, large yellow bus transportation to and from school is much greater than what we're, that what we're paying. So, but at the same time, we're seeing 15, you know, 10, 11, 12% rate increases year by year.
And Mr. Connolly, just to cut you off very quickly, but we can go through some of these and we can kick some of these down the road, but like, are there some that you need voted on tonight? Does that need to be voted on tonight?
We would like to
Yes.
get that process started. I mean, my office was asking, the, the folks in my office that do that work do a very good job. We typically advertise and ask for registrations at the end of March. Here we are April 7th. It's easier if we know everything upfront. It's not always a reality and we'll, and we deal with it. I think last year we, we collected the fee much later, but still took in registrations. The reason why we want to do registrations now is just, it just makes the efficiency design of bus routing that much easier.
So my suggestion for tonight, if people don't disagree with me, is we, we tackle bus transportation, kindergarten, preschool. Just, those are all registration ones that we need.
We'd like to notify the kindergarten-
We, yeah, we address those three tonight and make sure we're on the same page on those ones. And then the other three and the, and the overall, you know, universal cap, I think we have to address as well. I think those we maybe address the same time as the budget, as the budget hearing. Or I mean, that could be a little bit later, correct?
Yeah, I think the universal cap-
Committee agree with that? Yeah?
We do the cap, yeah.
So then, just to kind of lead through it very quickly then, so for the kindergarten first, like with the additional revenue, I mean, are we in alignment on not reducing this year and not increasing this year?
Yeah, I mean, I think we discussed this in the workshop.
We have no choice.
We could increase it or we could decrease it, but.
Yeah.
Wait, with the additional revenue, what, what are you talking about?
With new growth, because the, the big concern was like, we had identified about a million dollars of cuts, but there was 1.4 to be cut.
Yeah.
So this would, that would be a way that we could theoretically close that gap further. But if we have other ways that we're going to do it, then I think we could just say we're not going to touch the fee. We're not going to do further reductions.
I see, do it. Okay, yeah.
But we'll, we won't do a further increase this year either. But I know that we have to get out the information to kindergarten parents.
Yeah.
Okay. So I don't think we need to vote to not change something. So
Yeah.
the fee would be 2,500 if we're all in agreement then.
Agreed.
Okay. The preschool program, that is more, that hasn't been touched in years. And that is just, that's an optional one and it's, that's just other ones- And that is just, that's an optional one. And that's, that's just how they've said in the budget workshop, it's less than, it's quite a bit less than the actual cost of a preschool program if you go outside of the schools. And so are we in agreement on the, on the rate increase there to seven thousand for full day and four thousand for half day?
Yep, yes.
We talked about in the budget workshop. So do, do they want to make a motion to change the preschool program uh, fee for the twenty-five, twenty-hundred-five, twenty-twenty-six school year?
Um, I move to increase the user fee uh, for the preschool program for twenty-twenty-six to seven thousand for full day and four thousand for half day.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, now back to bus transportation. So the only thing that I, I want to add here is we took off, originally we were proposing to, to get rid of the late bus. And in the workshop, we had all agreed that we'd rather charge a fee for the late bus in order to do it. And one thing that was interesting, Dr. Daley and I met with some students this week or two, last week who have civic action projects. And so one of them was to focus on the, on the override and had some questions about that. One of them was focused on um, the late bus. And their, their suggestion was, they were, the late bus right now is only for middle school. They were asking if high schoolers could use the late bus as well. And then the other thing that probably, that kind of came up from that was, I, I had asked her, like, do you think there would be an appetite for students that maybe don't have a bus pass that would just want the late bus? Because right now it's only offered to
Right.
people that have a bus pass. But if it's going to be a separate fee, the, part of my worry is that like, we're not gonna get the money we need because a lot of people take it and never use it. And so they're just not gonna take, because it's free. But if it's a hundred dollars, people aren't gonna take it and there's not gonna be enough revenue there. So I'm wondering if we should actually have a standalone.
I think that, yeah. That's, I think that's what we would do, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then anybody, whether they.
Correct, yeah.
How much revenue?
You could get that pass without getting a regular.
Fifteen thousand. That's where they were cutting, it was gonna say fifteen thousand.
A, a late bus pass.
Right. And that would be the point, like high school or middle school could have it.
Yeah.
I don't know why not. Yeah. So high school or middle school could have it and anybody, high school or middle school could have it and you don't have to have a bus pass to have it. And I think what we would do is we do the same thing. If we put out a, we'd cap it at a certain amount. We'd put out a request for the buses and say like, late bus is a separate one.
Yeah, we would do it separately.
The one, the one thing I'll say about the late bus and, because usually that's offered like once the school year starts.
Yeah.
Is that like, say there's sixth grade students coming up, they don't, they don't understand necessarily yet the need for the late bus. But within short order, maybe they're like, oh wow, this will be great. Will there be like, do you think there'll be enough interest in an initial signup to fund a late bus?
We, we had sort of said,
I do.
We had said in our workshop that we thought it, it was imperative to have it, even if it's only a small number of students using it. We, we had, so I don't want to summarize what we said, but like, we had said in the workshop that we thought it was important enough to be able to offer it for equity reasons. And so by increasing the regular bus fee as well, that will help the reserve a little bit more. So if we do fall short and we raise, you know, seven thousand late bus fees, we can supplement it a little bit from the general reserve fund.
What time is the late bus? How much after the end of school?
Late bus is at four o'clock. Now, it's an hour after.
It's not gonna help with high school athletics, but it would help with high school extra curriculars and some extra clubs.
Right.
Yeah, after school.
And I mean, I think the challenge, I mean, Dr. Daley had a good point in that is if, if there could be like a signup system, um, where like, beginning of the day, like you have to just, if you want to take the late bus that day, you have to sign up. It's just, just to see how many people are taking it and then, you know, just because there might be a hundred people that have the bus pass, but they don't all take it every day. And so just to make sure that you don't get to the end of the day and eighty kids are waiting for the bus that, that can hold fifty. You know, like, we have to have some sort of system.
Data for upcoming years to see if we wanna.
Yeah. So we might have to develop something like that if we sell two hundred passes and we know that they can't all take the bus. There's gotta be assistance.
We currently run two buses. So we, the capacity is about a hundred students at the moment.
But, but overall, the, the cost of the buses are, this is the last year of the contract. This is the last option on the contract year. The big concern that we have is that it's gonna be a bigger increase next year with a new contract. And so we definitely don't want to fall further behind. We're already depleted. We already depleted the reserve this year more. I think we have to get that reserve in a better position going into a contract year because if it's a big increase, then we could potentially soften that slightly year over year if we needed to, to kind of average in that cost increase. But even for this year, for the option year, it's going up. What percentage is going up?
Uh, it's about ten percent.
About ten percent. And so the fees that we're proposing would increase the revenue by, what, ten or twelve percent or something with it?
Yeah, it was similar, ten, yep.
It's like a similar, so basically all we're doing is passing on this year's cost increase to the bus passes. And so we're not trying to, this isn't really gonna, this is gonna do anything really for the budget overall. This isn't gonna stop teachers from being caught. This is just meaning we don't have to further dip into the reserve or the operating budget. This is just saying that we're seeing a ten percent increase and it's being passed on to the users. Sorry to cut everybody off, but.
No, that makes sense.
Any comments, thoughts, questions? On that. So what we had said was five fifty per, for, for one student and nine hundred for family cap and an additional fee if you want the bu- the late bus of a hundred dollars. Have a question? Yeah, of course.
Uh, quick question, bus transportation. Uh, is there publicly available information about ridership and just some of the drivers behind that budget? I mean, I kind of like reading, doesn't even offer us, for example.
Interesting question about the late bus, the flexibility for high school students. How late is the late bus and what capture might you get from that?
And what would drive ridership there?
Right.
So where, where I find that information as a best of.
Um, I don't know if we publish the number of students on each bus. Uh, I will say the buses in the middle school and high school are at capacity.
We have how many buses?
We have twelve buses.
Twelve buses, high school, middle school is at capacity.
So it's about fi- fifty to fifty-five a bus.
Yeah.
On each one. So we, we bus um, district wide fourteen hundred students out of our about twenty-three hundred. So it's a large percentage, ride the bus.
And, and just to be clear on the fee, the state requires that you bus K through six who live more than two miles from the school. So if you are within the two mile radius, i- it's a fee if you, to get bused. If you're outside of sixth grade, if you're a seventh grader above, there's a fee if you wanna, if you want to do it. And as you know, some, some districts, all their schools are within the two mile radius. So they don't have to offer buses to anybody because every, every student is within two miles of their school. Or some just say, we're not gonna offer it outside for anybody. We don't have to. So they're only busing K through six that are outside of two miles. So they might only have, you know, two buses total. Yes.
I'm just thinking this is one of the areas where families are very reactive, right? They start doing the calculation about hitting their families and I think that's where I think, make people pay more attention.
Yeah.
If, if it's on the social media pages.
Right.
God bless you.
That is such an understatement.
Yeah, I, yeah, because all this starts adding up.
I don't want to lie, but I think that was on our mind when we, that's how, it was on my mind. I won't speak for everybody else. But when we were talking about increasing the bus.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's, you know, you gotta see it and if it's just a small factor.
But, but honestly, last year, in terms of comments, I believe one parent reached out when the bus fee was announced it was higher. And I know there was, I had one other person that initially didn't sign up and then did sign up and ended up on a waitlist because of it. And they reached out because they were on the waitlist. But really with the, with the increase, it was only, I think it was only like one parent.
Yeah, I didn't hear much.
We heard nothing. We heard, we heard when like, the bus doesn't arrive at their doorstep and they have to walk three houses down. We hear about that every time. But like, don't hear about
Yeah.
about it. And again, I mean, it, it's just, it's a way to, to offer it. But still that, you know, that five hundred and fifty dollars still does not pay for the seat on that bus for the year. Like it's still being supplemented by the, by the general operating budget. And so if we did cut the fees for, if we just bused the students we had to bus, i- it would be a cost savings. You give Mr. Connolly's language. He does that all the time.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's what we've always.
He does that all the time.
Yeah, I said this. It's not a bad deal.
Okay, so if, just, just so that Mr. Connolly can get this out to everybody, are we okay to do a motion to change the user fees and add the late bus? Somebody want to make that motion?
Uh, yep. Um, I move to um, increase the bus user fee for twenty-twenty-six to five hundred and fifty per passenger with a nine hundred dollar family cap and additional, additionally a late bus fee pass for uh, one hundred dollars.
Second?
Yeah, motion. Right, motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Unanimous? I think the only thing we did not get to was if we want to come back to social media and talk about what we want to post, you had said you wanted to hold the spot there.
I want to post Miss Molly's speech.
Which one?
Miss Molly's speech.
Do you have any, any, any things further for the social media right now, Tim or not?
Well, do we, well, we have lots of things for social media. The question is, are there, are there certain things that we want? So the way I look at it is, we have three weeks between now and then we vote on the budget. Uh, we obviously have a lot of information between the budget book and the presentation from tonight and today's meeting. The open question would be, are there things that perhaps came up tonight um, that we want to make sure are presented on the twenty-eighth so that we have that ability as we head towards the um, town meeting, right? I, I think we've got a lot of fodder. I don't know if there's priorities from the administration or from the school committee that we want to make sure we hit.
Oh, why don't we do this? Why don't, here, here's my suggestion. Why don't we go line by, person by person, say what stood out that you think would be, come out from this meeting? So Jeff, what do you think stood out?
We're just getting consensus.
With that? I mean, Jeff, I mean, what, what's something that stood out to you?
Jeff might say something, but I'll agree.
Right. Well, there could be a couple of different ones, a couple of different posts.
To be, I mean, to be clear, I mean, the, the goal is like three a week.
Correct. So we're talking about probably getting, getting half a dozen.
Between now and the next.
Right.
Honestly, I'm just gonna repeat what Noel said. The thing that stands out is them.
Yeah.
It's, it's their comments.
But this is, this is Molly, the students, I think, stood out.
Those are the two.
Students coming. Dr. Daley?
I just want to suggest, I think this slide might be a good one to put out.
I agree.
I think maybe the one from last year, even though it causes some confusion, I think there's a big picture element to show.
The bulleted list.
I think obviously the cut list, you know.
Well, I think, I think.
Or is anything in Michael's presentation tonight fair to be put out? Maybe that's a simple way to say it.
What I, what I think is a combination of your blog post that shows last year's cuts and the cuts this year. Because to me, what I'm gonna be talking about is twenty-six point five positions. Because that's what we're talking about here is between the two years from twenty-twenty-four. And so you show what was cut in for FY twenty-twenty-five, what is being, what is proposed to be cut for twenty-twenty-six. And maybe it ends up being a little bit less, maybe it ends up being nine instead of ten and a half this year. And truthfully, like, there was a few new positions to get to level services, but if we're saying the standard is level services from twenty-twenty-four, if we make all the proposed cuts right now, we're talking about twenty-six and a half fewer positions um, in the district. So I think you get that from the blog post com- combined with the cut list.
So right, so and just to make sure we're clear, everybody knows what they're seeing, right? Is that you're gonna see a summary infographic that has it with a caption underneath it that would direct to the appropriate document and the page.
Right.
That represents it, right?
Right.
So it's easily consumable. You click on the link underneath it and it'll then jump to that slide that we're on.
Yeah, and I mean, this slide followed by, and I'm pointing at, um, only, maybe Tim can see it, but it's the, the, it's the cuts. And then saying like, and referencing Dr. Daley's kind of bigger list, like this, this is what's happening this year, I imagine, I mean.
The bigger list of twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
It's stacked. The key thing is stacking the ones we have right now. Well, there, well, there, there were talking about things that we didn't get added from strategic. There's a lot of other issues. But like, even to get to level services, like if we're using that as a standard, is that we would like to be able to prevent, provide the same level of service to our students year over year. Last year, we needed fifteen point seven positions. We, that was increasing three point two. But we cut twelve and a half from level staffing, but fifteen point seven from level services. Because again, Mr. um, Maloney talked about the classroom. One, there, there was a elementary class that we wanted to not go up to twenty-five last, this year, twenty-four this year. And it did because we didn't add that teacher. Um, and then this year, level services is level staffing because there's no additional things needed for what we call level services for this year. So, but level services from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-six, we're talking about twenty-six point five position cuts. So.
Um, and just for social media purposes, I agree with the three things everyone's saying. And maybe this doesn't need to be before the twenty-eighth, but maybe the week of the election or something of, of Jeff's comment about uh, people understanding that budgets have to be approved to even go to town meeting and, and things like that and, and voting. And because I, I don't think that most people do, and I think that's important.
You could probably put the calendar out there, some, some sort of calendar out there that shows like what the next steps are. Like what do you need to do? If he has like the next steps or whatever, like maybe a modified one saying, this is what you need to do.
We have a tablet for that.
There you go. But I think those, those are what stood out to me the most, I think. Um, kind of think.
Does NorCam capture like the, like would the owl have spun around and caught Miss Molly talking or is it just her?
The owl is the Google meet, the.
It'll be on the video from NorCam as well.
Sniff that out then.
Yes.
We can get a copy of the original.
I know I can't, but.
I know, but these guys are magic.
We can do it.
Okay. Anything else? I think we got through everything else. Michael, anything? No?
We are cutting our digital learning team though, so probably gonna be doing it, but that is my background, so I'm happy to help when I can.
There you go.
Try not to, try not to.
Favorite motion of the night? Anyone want to do a motion to adjourn?
Me, um, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We'll have a second. All those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, everyone.